Yeah, all the rest of the crew here. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call to order the Monday, April 12th, 2021 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We'll do a quick roll call for the participant here. Mike Fournier, Mayor, zooming in from Royal Oak, Michigan.
I'm Pat Prouse from Royal Oak, Michigan.
Mr. Douglas?
Charlotte Douglas here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Hunt?
Monica Hunt in Royal Oak.
Mr. Dubac?
Kyle Dubac here in Royal Oak.
And Christopher Colo.
I'm here in Royal Oak.
All right, so there's been a request to adjourn to closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Douglas specify her motion if you don't mind.
Yes, Mayor, I move to enter closed session under Section 8C of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement and under Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consider a written attorney-client communication from the interim city attorney, which is material exempt from discussion or disclosure by Section 131G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Yeah, that sounds like something else I could, thanks, thanks, Mr. Douglas.
All right, now that we've clarified that, I see Commissioner Macy is here. Commissioner Macy will do a quick roll call before we go to the vote. Can you give your location?
I'm here in Royal Oak.
Okay, wonderful. Did you hear the motion that was made, Commissioner Macy?
I did, very well stated.
Okay, this motion made by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Colo. One last opportunity for discussion. All right, with none, we'll call a roll call vote to go into closed session. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Prouse?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we'll go to closed session. For those of you watching, we'll be back at 7:30 to conduct the rest of our meeting. Mitch Winger, just let us know when we're in closed session, thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll bring back the, the meeting from closed session, back to our regularly scheduled meeting. Thanks to everyone that, that's tuning in for your patience, we had a lot to cover. So we're gonna do a quick roll call again. Mayor Mike Fournier, zooming in from Royal Oak, Michigan. Mr. Prouse?
Pat Prouse in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Mr. Douglas?
Charlotte Douglas, present in Royal Oak.
Mr. Hunt?
Monica Hunt, present in Royal Oak.
Mr. Dubac?
Kyle Dubac here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Macy?
Melanie Macy here in Royal Oak.
Mr. Colo?
I'm here in Royal Oak.
All right, perfect. So that brings us to item 6 on our agenda tonight, which is an invocation given by Commissioner Colo. Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reflect on what to discuss tonight. My attention turned to our public safety officers and the busy weeks they've had. Recently, the fire department commissioned a new truck, and in its very first day of use, it responded to a fire, and then the preceding three days responded to three more. It's a tough pace that must have been taxing on our firefighters. The police went out without their own fire emergencies, and this past Wednesday, the PD were the first response to a late-night house fire. When arriving to the home, they found a senior gentleman who told police his wife was still in the burning house, and the officers, without hesitation, ran into the fire to save the woman. Ran into the fire. As we gather tonight, I'm inspired by the acts of our officers and firefighters. Every day, they live what we all should strive to achieve: service to others. And while these grand gestures are public safety heralds taken, are always ones we can all serve, there are small opportunities to make the world a better place that we all encounter daily. I recently stumbled upon a copy of our old city seal. The lead-in in the crest reads "Bemis Severe," which means "We Live to Serve." Tonight, we will have spirited discussions on many topics that will improve our community, from block grant funding to traffic issues and COVID relief. Almost all these items started in some way, shape, or form in a volunteer citizens committee. Each month, our neighbors volunteer countless hours, doing their part, their small opportunity to make our community a better place. They give up dinners with families, miss bad times with kids, or just skip out on a night with friends. Our volunteers come from all different backgrounds, but the quality they unanimously share is their dedication and desire to keep Royal Oak moving in the right direction. So tonight, as we start our agenda, as we give thanks to those who add to the dialogue of problem-solving in our community, and that we continue to embody the spirit of living to serve as this commission takes our small opportunity to make this community better. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Colo, excellent invocation. So now, why don't Commissioner Colo, you lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance? I ask if you can stand, please do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Richard Sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Colo. This brings us to item eight on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. Mitch Winger? Mitch Winger? We'll give it a moment here.
Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, excellent. We have 20 messages this evening, public comments this evening, and I'm going to share my screen, and again, I would ask that you adjust your volume up if you're having any concerns.
Thank you, Mitch Winger.
Hey, Lou Flurry, 1516 North Maple. I think I'm a pretty funny guy. I like to laugh at the absurdities of life, and I think there's a lot of humor and truth because, you know, you can't make a lot of this stuff up. We recently had a new kitchen range delivered, and the guy started screwing something on the floor. I said, "What the heck is that?" He goes, "Oh, that's the anti-tipping bracket," and they had to install it on all appliances. And I thought, "Ah, jeez, what next?" So just for kicks, I thought I'd read the manual of the range, which was 268 pages long with various languages. So I pressed one for English, and it was only 62 pages. Operation information started on page 22. The preceding pages were alerts, dangers, things to do, things not to do, including, "Never remove oven legs because anti-tip will not engage. Do not touch heating elements, they may be hot. Don't store or use flammable material in the oven. Don't use the oven to heat the room. Don't use the oven for drying clothes. Don't allow children to crawl into the oven. And my favorite, don't attempt to dry a pet in the oven." Now, the reason all these were listed is probably because somebody tried this. You know, when I grew up, we ran with scissors. We played with sharpened lawn darts. We drank from the hose. It was hot and tasted like rubber. And when the tap ran cold, the water was cold, but it still tasted like rubber. We rode in the back of pickup trucks. We had rock fights. We broke thermometers so we could play with the little balls of mercury. How did we ever make it? Sure, we have some scratches, dents, scars, yet here we are. You know, I don't think there's enough bubble wrap in the world to protect all the wimps we've produced in the last bunch of years. And I'm sure this rant will probably offend some people. Tough. I'm offended if you're offended. I'm Lou Flurry, and I approve this message. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Norma Reganold, and I live at 2603 Bensetta Boulevard in Royal Oak. I've lived here for 36 years, and I'm very fond of the city of Royal Oak. I really am against the social district, the To Go Cups. I know that other, some other communities have approved it, but I also know that Royal Oak has always been able to decide for itself what kind of city it wants to be. And I think it's a city that welcomes families and is a wholesome type of, of city. I think the downtown area is wonderful, and I, I love to frequent it. I also try as much as I can to support the restaurants, and I order takeouts. One of the main reasons why I'm against the To Go Cup is that, okay, people will be walking around the social district downtown, drinking out of this cup. What would prevent them from letting someone with them who's underage drink from this cup as well? I'm sure there's no way of preventing that. And also, I know that they have to get a new cup at a, a new restaurant. They can't bring the cup and just have it refilled. But on the other hand, when you drink in a restaurant, people are aware of how much you're drinking, and if they think that you're drinking too much, they may decide not to serve you. Whereas with To Go Cups, that's very difficult, because the person just goes in and gets a refill, gets, gets a new cup and pays for it, and there's really not a lot of observation. And then, I think that, that, that's a deterrent as well. I know that Las Vegas and New Orleans, oh yeah, I mean, they, they certainly, they certainly do that. But I don't think we want to be that type of area. They have their good points, of course, but I don't think that's one of them. I don't really want to be known as a party town, and, but that, it isn't that so much. It's just, I feel it's unsafe. It just is not a good idea for people to be walking around downtown drinking alcohol. So I thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it. Good night.
Janice Wagman. I'm calling regarding two items on tonight's agenda. First, on the consent agenda is, quote, "Receive and File the Approved Capital Improvement Plan." One item in the plan was an absolute shock: $300,000 for rewriting the master plan. I attended the strategic planning meeting and reviewed the resulting approved goals and objectives. Rewriting the master plan was not included. Only one commissioner has repeatedly advocated for this and made no attempt to hide the fact that she wants multiple-family housing included in single-family zoning. In other words, the end of single-family neighborhoods. And high density seems to be the goal of many of you. This is a big change and deserves more transparency and attention by the city commission prior to slipping it into the consent agenda for, quote, "Receiving and filing." I strongly suggest removing this and the allocation of $300,000 of our taxpayer dollars from the 2021-22 CIP. Since it was not part of the goals and objectives you approved, it should not even be included for consideration in the coming year. Secondly, the new social districts recommended by the DDA, and specifically the inclusion of the downtown park in the allowable drinking area, seven days a week, 11 hours a day. Although having a glass of wine or responsible drinking while sitting in the park sounds delightful, how do we know that will be the outcome of this resolution? I'm sure you've seen the recent video from a downtown Royal Oak establishment where a loud party drinking atmosphere prevailed. I don't think this is what the residents had in mind when they attended and gave input to the development of the park, when they suggested a water feature and climbing hill for children, and identified the convenient location of the library next to the park and the promised serene location of the Veterans Memorial. Further, including the park is in direct conflict of City Ordinance 515-7 prohibiting bringing alcohol into our parks unless it is part of a special event. I strongly suggest, if you are approving the social drinking district on tonight's agenda, that you remove the park from the allowable area, since it will not be completed for approximately six months. This may give you and the police department time to review the impact and reconsider whether it's appropriate to include it in the future. Thank you.
Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. I was appalled to see the downtown park contract provisions appear in tonight's consent agenda. The public deserves to hear current additional discussion of such a large contract on such a contentious project. This contract modification apparently ignores the significant public comment from January 2020 to date about protecting and preserving the Veterans War Memorial. And the consent agenda is okay for routine bill payment and transactions. It's not okay for important matters that should have current public discussion, such as raising the construction contract amount for a public park by close to half a million dollars. Moreover, the plant moran letter about it is rather confusing. It says the alternate number one includes the water feature, but the letter also says, and I quote, "It will require additional funding for this work to happen, and the amount they're estimating is around $700,000 more." It's also unclear to me what happened to the $1.5 million proposed to redo the library platform. As that may be, however, my primary concern tonight is the cost of the project relative to the elements in the plan, specifically moving and redesigning the Veterans War Memorial and the library entrance without voter authorization or significant input from the veterans. The claim that many veterans participated in community engagement is not substantiated by the Noak and Kraus materials, and the Memorial Society's Carol Hennessy's proposal to add veterans to the task force was rejected. Recently, I read in the paper that City Manager Brake is threatening a cost to the taxpayers of $400,000 if the memorial has to be moved back to its current location after the election. That's just dumb. You've been offered the opportunity to leave the Veterans War Memorial and library entrance alone for now, and proceed with other elements of the park. Ideally, you'd also spend a modest amount now to have an architect redesign the park so the current green space memorial area remains as is and is integrated into the park, which should have happened originally. Dr. Wallace?
Hello, it's Monday afternoon, 10 after 4:00. My name is Virginia Merritt, a Royal Oak citizen. I very hope and earnestly that the commission consider their decision regarding making a social district in downtown Royal Oak. I do not think that's necessary. I know the city has reached out and done many in downtown development association, many wonderful things to help the bars and the restaurants, and I think that's fine. I do not think establishing a social district, which will border on residential areas, is a, a becoming feature to our city of Royal Oak. I would seriously hope the commission not approve that. I appreciate your consideration, and I, I know how hard it's been for the bars and the restaurants, and I think the city has done many things to help them, and that, and that's good. But please, I do not think that the social district establishment is a, a becoming feature to our Royal Oak community. Thank you.
Hi, this is Dan Godeck at 1121 East Third Street. Speaking as Chair of the Traffic Committee, I'm not certain I'll be able to be on the call later tonight when the item comes up on your agenda as third, or item number 11. I did want to give some feedback from the committee. We did ask that two options be presented to you. Option A being to, to tear out all the right-of-way and put grass, and B being to work with the business owners and look at, in a, a plan that was submitted by Mr. Razor and supported by a number of the businesses. It's not normal for this to come in front of traffic. We didn't particularly see a safety reason for leaving it as is, option A or option B. And we didn't feel one was particularly safer, given the criteria, one way or the other, but we tried to look at it because it was in front of us. Like you to consider both options. We saw benefits in trying to do a compromise to include garden swales and whatnot for, for hard surface impact, but wanted to give a little bit on that. The other resolutions were pretty straightforward. I'll try to join the call this evening regardless, but if it goes late, I have a, a commitment early tomorrow morning. April is, pardon me, distracted driver awareness month. Please put a phone app on your kid's phone and your own that gives a message automatically out for texting if you, if you get something like that while you're driving. Please drive safe. Stop speeding in our neighborhoods if that's you, and, and stay safe. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
This is Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford in Royal Oak. The veterans were collecting petition signatures at a local business for an ordinance to be placed on the ballot for the public to vote on whether the Veterans Memorial should remain at the current location. I just want to comment on the classless act of the commission and County Commissioner Dave Woodward objecting to the business manager, which resulted in the veterans being asked to leave the premises, while, at the same time, Commissioner Douglas was collecting signatures for her reelection at a business located across the street a half a block away. Again, classless. I would like to hear more open discussion about your plans for eliminating single-family zoning. I understand that your objection, your objective is to homogenize the character of the occupancy. This would be accomplished by multiple occupancy apartments and smaller dwellings than are currently permitted in the single-family zones. I thought that this was just a local kooky idea until I heard President Biden comment last week that they want more national control over housing and to eliminate single-family homes. Again, these are more examples of the totalitarian characteristic of your socialist agenda. The single-family home size is already limited to 3,500 square feet in Royal Oak. I am reminded of the movie Doctor Zhivago that takes place during the Russian Revolution. Individual living space was limited to 50 square meters. That's 538 square feet for a family of less than five. People with large homes were forced to take in strangers. Just what is your end game here? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Kroll. I'm calling on behalf of the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce, 200 South Washington, where I preside as president of the board. On my interest tonight, our interest tonight is the Delamere project that, that the Traffic Committee is presenting. The chamber is very supportive of trying to come up with some creative ways to, to make this work. We think it's a, it's a great opportunity for a public-private endeavor where everybody can win. The, the chamber has been involved kind of from the beginning of this. We have 10 members who, who reside in that neighborhood, and we feel and they feel that they're, they're going to be greatly hurt if they have to give up their parking. Many of these businesses have been there for 50 years, and, and most have been there for quite a while. The neighborhood has kind of regressed how it's progressed, and at this point, we're just looking for ways to continue doing business. The chamber nor the, nor our members are against beautification by any means, and we all think it's time for kind of a step up. But it would be wonderful if we stepped up and the business community could go on having the property, support them in the way it's always been, and yet we also understand the desire for the city to beautify that neighborhood. Certain things have to come because they, it's just time. Obviously, for many years, Delamere hasn't really been known for much of anything. I, I mean, I can remember being a, a supplier, having balls hit at me from the golf course. So we, we are making a change, but I think it's very important that the business community gets a change along with us. I would ask that the, that the city, by the way, a cou- a couple of points. One, we're not asking for any money, additional funds. The business community is certainly willing to, to, to do whatever they need to do to, to make the city happy and feel that they've contributed to this, and, and the business community is certainly willing to do that. So really, without the city spending on it any more money, and the business community keeping the parking, but in a much, much more beautiful sense. I, I can tell you that the chamber started some of the conceptual drawings that you're going to see tonight. There, there's been a variety of different proposals, but, but we feel that, that maximizing the efforts there would be in, in the best interest of the business community, and certainly...
Hi, my name's Lori Peack. I'm a longtime Royal Oak resident and beekeeper. I noticed the April 1st Facebook post from City Hall about swarms in Royal Oak and calling bees in the D. I wonder if Royal Oak considered having a list of local beekeepers, Royal Oak beekeepers, if there are swarms, if that could be posted as well. If anybody wants to reach me, my phone number is 248-310-1368. Thank you.
Yes, hello, my name is Alan Davidson. I'm a business owner in the Delamere industrial area, currently a commercial photographer, but I own four buildings on Delamere Boulevard and Nakota. I've been in business for 36 years. I've been in the Royal Oak area for going on 15 now. Currently, I employ approximately five people, but as a photographer, we hire freelancers. Tomorrow, there'll be up to 30 people working there, which 20 to 30% actually are Royal Oak residents, and they work on a freelance basis, but we try to keep them as busy as possible. Tomorrow is a perfect example of the necessity for parking, which is very critical to us when we do ramp up to these larger productions. But the other important thing is that I own a CrossFit gym at 4305 Delamere Boulevard, and that gym has currently grown quite a bit since they've been in business. And at, early in the morning, around 5:00 AM, or in the evening, after 6:00 or 7:00, they take up many of the front public parking spaces which are in question to be removed. They can have as many as 10 to 30 additional people if they're doing a special event or a special practice session. So parking already has been quite an issue in the Delamere area, and really, losing more parking spaces will be devastating. The CrossFit gym could actually end up closing their business on Delamere and actually moving away because of how critical parking is. My other business on Delamere is a carpenter, but he also is a, he does metalwork, and he has four or five spaces in the front, and to access his rear parking lot, there actually is not even a sidewalk because there's power lines that run along the side of his building. Also, if any of his clients, which are relatively high-end people buying custom work from him, had to walk to the front, they'd have to walk in the street, or if they entered through the back, they'd be directly walking into a wood shop with tools and other dangerous things around. So it's really not an option for him either. If we can keep some of the parking, I am happy to maintain... If we can keep some of the parking, I am happy to maintain it, whether that's striping, insuring, parking blocks, sealing it every couple of years or whenever necessary. The point is to keep it beautiful and functional for everybody involved. And so really, you know, the danger in removing parking is that it can destroy businesses, especially because the future is unknown with this area and it could grow and blossom to things like hair salon or nail salon or even a small coffee cafe. And none of these businesses will be welcome without the ability for people to pull in and do a quick stop and park there and then just leave. So I hope that these are things that you consider and to keep the area going and up and running and prosperous for everyone, along with all the people that moved into condo that would like to have parking and enjoy new businesses as they grow and change in that neighborhood. Again, my name is Alan Davidson. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patty Sunny from 4326 Delamere Boulevard. I'm calling about the agenda item related to Delamere Boulevard parking. I work with my dad, Kevin Heintz, who owns the building. Our family also owns 4622 Delamere Boulevard. My father and grandfather built many of the buildings on Delamere Boulevard in the mid 1950s and 1960s. We park in the front of our building to enter the front offices. We only have a small fenced-in parking lot in the rear. Access only to the warehouse, which is rented to our tenants. It would be dangerous for us to park in the rear and walk through the warehouse to the front office. We strongly oppose the option for parallel parking. Parallel parking on Delamere Boulevard will not work for us or for many on the street. We are not opposed to beautifying Delamere Boulevard, but taking away our parking in the front of our buildings will be detrimental to our business, to our neighbors' businesses, and also detrimental to our property values. Thank you for your time.
Hi, this is Barry Harrison.
And Arturo Sanchez from Art Harrison Interiors. We have the building at 4339 Delamere. We have been in business for 28 years, 16 of which we have been in this location in Royal Oak. We have maintained our building. We have made many repairs. We have five full-time employees, one part-time employee, several of which who are looking to purchase homes in the Royal Oak community. We, Barry and I, were very instrumental in the Birmingham Rail District, actually so much so that we got kind of priced out of the neighborhood and that's why we came over here and we've been working with the community to organically produce what we now affectionately call No Row, the North Royal Oak Design District. And we got several of our friends, Alan Davidson, to move from the Rail District. We got Chef Kelly to move here from the Rail District and we're continuing to push our friends and business owners that we know to come here. A, because we think that Royal Oak is actually more small business friendly. Our problem with the parking is, of course, it's very instrumental for us. Our clients come here at night. As you know, Michigan is not the sunniest state in the Union and we would like, you know, we would like them to park very close to the door, especially in clement weather and such, and it's just very dangerous for them to try to come from the side parking lot all the way around. So that's a very important safety concern for us. We're very amenable to maintaining and striping and ensuring and installing the parking blocks. And of course, we want to work with the city to reach a compromise. As you'll know, in the Rail District, we worked heavily with the city and came up what we think was a great idea and it's worked out famously for them. It's now one of the more vibrant sections of the city and we think.
Parking is the biggest problem they have.
Yeah, parking's always going to be their problem and we don't want it to be ours. So like I said, I think we can come up with something that's amazing and that's what we're hoping the city will let us do. So again, Jim Razor will be speaking for the group. There's eight companies or more now that are working with him in conjunction on this and hopefully, like I said, he'll be more succinct on all of this. But thank you for your time and we look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
My name is Vicki Morton and I'm the vice president of Barrick Enterprises. Barrick Enterprises is a petroleum jobber who moved from Birmingham onto Delamere Court in 1995. In 2014, we purchased a machine shop at 4338 Delamere Boulevard where we now reside. We spent a great deal of money turning an old worn-out shop into a beautiful office building. We planted grass, a dozen trees, dozens of bushes and flowers. We even won the Royal Oak Beautification Award. Then in 2015, we spent another $180,000 to tear up our parking lot, install a water retention system and lay concrete. Two years ago, the city decided we needed sidewalks and we paid to have them installed as well. We have two street-side offices that we lease out and prior to COVID, our tenants and their customers use the street-side parking Monday through Friday. In the 25 years that I've driven down Delamere Boulevard to work, I've never witnessed an accident nor experienced any issues with vehicles parking in the spaces along the street. I don't believe the Traffic Committee's plan to install parallel parking on one side of the street is a good idea. People stink at parallel parking and it doesn't seem safe with semi trucks making deliveries on the street. It also eliminates 65% of the current parking capacity. Before the COVID shutdown, nearly all the street parking was used. I do not believe this is because businesses were choosing to park on the street instead of in their lots. Should you choose this plan, I ask, where will all these people park? In my mind, there seems to be only two options. One, on adjacent residential streets or two, they won't need to park at all because businesses will be forced to relocate and I'm sure that won't be in Royal Oak. We welcome the beautification of our street and are more than willing to sign a leasing agreement in which we would continue to maintain the parking spaces in front of our building. Delamere has always been an industrial boulevard and the business owner's needs should not be ignored in favor of the new neighborhood development. We ask you to do the right thing and approve a plan that keeps the majority of the parking in place, allows the owners to fix any worn-out pavement and adds more green space all at the same time. I thank you for your consideration.
My name is Patrick McGee. I live at 4524 Elmhurst Avenue. I am in support of city staff recommendations to improve Delamere Boulevard by resurfacing the roadway. I am in support of the parallel parking on the east side of the road as well as the prohibited overnight on-street parking. Personally, I go on daily walks from my house with my dog and 17-month-year-old son. During my walks, I frequently observe cars parked on the sidewalk and cars and trucks blocking traffic when parking on Delamere. Parked cars are frequently causing obscured sightlines at the intersections of Nakota and Delamere when trying to cross. Recently, I documented all the cars parked along Delamere. I noticed that there were a total of 20 registered vehicles parked and seven unregistered cars parked in the right-of-way for a total of 27 cars on April 1st. I would like to see Delamere Boulevard resurfaced with green space added to help reduce water runoff. Also, it is my observation that much of the paved right-of-way is not being used for parking but for the storage of unregistered cars and the sale of vehicles, both of which I believe are against city ordinances regardless whether it's a parking spot or not. Please support the best resolution that restores green space and helps reduce water runoff in the Delamere Boulevard area. Thank you.
My name is Robert Kelly. I'm the owner of Fire Defense Equipment located at 4350 Delamere. We have been at the Royal Oak location for over 30 years and we presently employ approximately 43 employees with most of them at our Royal Oak office. A number of these employees also live in Royal Oak. We are very concerned about losing the parking in front of our building for a number of reasons, including safety hazards for both our employees and visitors, reductions in property values because of the loss of parking, and severe inconveniences for our customers who often carry things in to be serviced. We don't want to mix customers and pedestrians in a congested parking lot. We have always attempted to maintain our buildings and parking area and we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on improvements and repairs since we occupied the building in the middle of 1980s. We have been limited to what improvements we can make on the parking areas because the city would not let us remove asphalt. We have already taken action to move our larger vehicles from the front of the building so that smaller vehicles are sure not to overhang sidewalks, making it safer for those pedestrians who enjoy walking down Delamere. We are also in agreement to install parking blocks, striping, insurance for the city and to continue to maintain the area in the future. We're also in agreement to plant some additional trees and take additional steps to help beautify our neighborhood. Frankly, my experience with Royal Oak has been great. After all, I've been here for over 60 years. It does seem to me, however, that many times the city commission has already made up their mind on what they want to do rather than work with the citizens and business owners. I believe we have and will continue to show good faith. We just need you to tell us what we can do to save this parking. This area has been an industrial area since the late 1950s and we should not be required to look like a residential neighborhood, nor should we have to change just because the city elected to put up some new homes. We want to be good citizens, good neighbors. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is John Gluck. I don't know if you know this, but bees sting kids. I know you're voting on Normandy Oaks today, but the idea of putting 120,000 honey bees into a park where there's two soccer fields might warrant some attention there. We had a bee sting just last practice outside, so anyway, pay attention to that, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gerald Drouillard of Auto House Royal Oak. We're at 4411 Delamere and as one of the businesses affected by the removal of the parking in front of our building, we'd like to express our support for the angled parking proposal. We only hope that the city commission will consider how important that this parking is to the operation of our business and the other businesses on our street. I know this area is zoned heavy industry and I think maybe the parking path is not the greatest use for this property. And we know the intent of the city is not to make it more difficult for small business and we know that the city's not anti-small business, but we are hoping that they will be fair in considering the seriousness of this proposal. Like many of the businesses on our street, we've suffered through many difficult years and now we are successful. In my case, it only took 30 years and this is a family business. My son and my daughter are taking it over and they're doing a very, very good job. Many of us have lost sleep worrying about this and we're asking that and hoping that the city will be fair and not take away the parking on our street. When we were thinking about this, maybe there are other things that could be done for the green space. We have quite a bit of green space at our property, but I've seen rooftop gardens. Our friends went to India and risked their lives on a mission trip to do that and it worked out quite well. Maybe that's something we could look into. We'd like to be one of the first to propose an, like, an idea like that to absorb some of the rainwater and I think there's other things that we could consider. We love being in Royal Oak. It's been a very, very good city to do business in and we're only hoping that the city commission will be fair in this, considering the 90-degree angle parking. It looks like the best solution for the problem. Thank you.
My name is Anne Marie Nadolsky. I'm a longstanding resident of over 20 years and I'm also a local beekeeping expert. I have been made aware through an article in the Royal Oak Tribune that bees in the D will be placing hives within the city and I'd like my opportunity to state why I might be a better fit as well as some of my other expert residential neighbors that are beekeeping experts and educators throughout southeastern Michigan. Not only would it be a more grassroots effort and localized, we can bring to the table our expertise and potentially a lot of cost savings to the city. $1,200 per hive is pretty expensive as it pertains to the maintenance and support of a single beehive and we're right here in local. I also noticed that the city's promoting reaching out to bees in the D for any sort of swarm capture, should there be any swarms in the city. That too would be something I'd be interested in as well as a coalition of other beekeepers that I know here in the city of Royal Oak. There's about a dozen of us and we'd just like an opportunity to place our name in the hat and state our case and provide the city our expertise versus having it farmed out elsewhere. My return number is 248-302-2728. Once again, my name is Anne Marie Nadolsky, Royal Oak resident and beekeeper, 248-302-2728. Thank you.
This is Brad Kelly. I'm the general manager at Fire Defense Equipment Company on Delamere Boulevard. We've been in Royal Oak for 33 years now out of our 72 years of operation and we expect to employ 45 employees by the end of this year. We very much appreciate and agree that the street should be beautified on Delamere Boulevard, but we also feel that we should maintain parking for the functionality of businesses and for the safety of the adjacent residential areas. And we're very grateful for the efforts of Mr. James Razor and we believe that the proposal put forth by him for the alternate restructuring of parking on Delamere Boulevard is ultimately in everyone's best interest and will, and will continue to maintain the safety of our residents and our business operations. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Joan Mandal. I'm a longtime resident of Royal Oak. I'm a 20-year beekeeper in the city of Royal Oak and I'm speaking on behalf of an organization of a dozen beekeepers in the city of Royal Oak. We only found out recently that the city is considering a contract with an outside corporate beekeeping company to place beehives in our city. We have some concerns about this. We think we know what's going on in the city really well and we work cooperatively with the senior center, the nature center and public schools and we would not like this decision to be rushed into without some consultation with local beekeepers. So we're asking that you table any decision about a contract with, with beekeeping for the city to first allow us to address the city council and make a proposal and a bid from residents of Royal Oak who have been operating beehives in the city for quite a while. Finally, a proposal to have beehives in the new Normandy Park, which we only heard about really belatedly from the newspaper, was a proposal that both another person and I made early on in the building of the park. So we were really interested in trying to push it from the beginning and we really like our voices recognized and for you to hear from us and to accept our proposal before going forward. I think it will much better serve the residents of Royal Oak. Thank you.
Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission. That concludes the public comment called in for this evening's meeting.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schwanger. We appreciate that. This brings us back to the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Do you wish to make a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Perush?
Yes, I will approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cola. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Mr. Macy?
M?
M? Okay, anybody else? Mr. Colo?
J?
J, M, and J. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Bruce?
Um, G?
M and G. Anyone else? All right, so the consent agenda now consists of city commission, special city attorney, initial interviews, meeting minutes from March fifteenth. City commission meeting minutes, March twenty-second. City commission, special city attorney, second interviews, meeting uh, March thirty-first. Uh, claims from the twenty-sixth and twenty-sixth special in April sixth and April ninth. Um, approval of purchase orders, declaration of disposable, disposal of surplus property, approval of amendment to Colasanti O'Brien Construction Management Contract, approval of professional services industries, abatement and oversight services proposal, Department of Public Services and Recreation Request to Fill Vacancy, contract modification to contract B sixteen oh one, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning maintenance, Board of Contract for Electrical Installation Memorial Park Baseball Field Number Three Score Board, and Rehabilitation Board of Appeals Recommendations for Approval of Community Development Block Grant Planning Years Twenty-One to Twenty-Five, Twenty-Five Consolidated Plan, and Planning Year Twenty, Twenty-One Annual Action Plan. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Commissioner Colo? The motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion on the consent agenda. Uh, Commissioner Colo?
Um, so I'll just throw in some quick discussion. I would pull A through Q because I think these are all really interesting things to talk about, but it's nine o'clock and we're just getting started with the agenda tonight. Um, I just want to point out a, a couple of things here. Um, one is uh, to the South Side neighbors, we are improving Franklin Park. This was a promise that was made um, uh, by the uh, Rehab Board of Appeals. It was from Parks and Rec that we would take the money in the next year available from CBDG to fund this Franklin Park, which was just out, just too expensive for this year's expenditure. So I just want to thank staff, um, and thank you to that board for making sure that this did happen. This is a promise we're keeping. We're incrementally improving all our parks, and this is a really awesome improvement in this neighborhood. Um, so that's, you know, I, I just wanted to make recognition of that. Um, we also have a, approved a contract that's continuing to develop a baseball field for a semi-professional baseball team. And we're, we're having real good baseball inside of Royal Oak this year. Not only that, we're being left with this awesome field for all of our um, junior uh, teams to use. So I mean, that's just another really cool park improvement. We have a lot of good things going on. Um, and then, you know, just one thing I, I kind of want to address from public comment, uh, the capital improvement plan is a receivable file because that's state statute. The planning commission uh, sets the capital improvement plans. We are uh, we just look at it. So um, lots of going on here, and I'm excited for it.
Mr. Colo? Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, consent agenda is done, but that brings us to item, we'll start in alphabetical order, item G. Um,
Just very quickly, Waterworks Theater is going to try this summer to put on a performance in Star JC Park. They couldn't last year because of COVID. Um, they're like other nonprofit arts and um, entertainment organizations within the community have really struggled this year because they haven't been able to put on performances and, and sell tickets. Um, all I'm going to suggest is that if there's any way possible, though, when we are considering in our budget how we are spending, that at least this year's allocation of fifteen million dollars in additional cares act funding from the federal government, that we consider some kind of relief or, or benefit or assistance to the nonprofit organizations, especially the arts organizations in the community that have really struggled, um, like Waterworks, because they haven't been able to put on any performances or have any public exhibitions of their art or anything else. That's it. I just wanted to plant that seed, and this is a good time to do it because they're actually on the agenda. But we'll talk more about this, I'm, I'm hoping, when we do the actual budget. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruce. Um, Commissioner Bruce, did you just move it? I'm sorry.
No, I didn't. I did not, but I should. I'll move approval of this item.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Bruce. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Further discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Bruce?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. That brings us to item M previously on the consent agenda. Mr. Macy, got a few calls on this one?
I think there's someone alphabetically before me, or no?
Oh, you're right, Jay. I got Jay down here. Yeah, I wrote him in the wrong order, and then I said-
I'm happy to go.
We'll, we'll go with you now, and then we'll go back to Jay.
I had a whole thing about planting a seed after Commissioner Bruce said it too. Oh, I'm nuts.
Okay, well, I guess I, I could have thought of something with bees in the D and seed, but I did not. So um, I just wanted to pull this off after hearing some of the comments from our local beekeepers. We certainly were not trying to make our local beekeepers angry by entering into this contract with bees in the D. This has been something that's been ongoing for a couple of years. We've been looking at this. We had a Parks um, American Senior Advisory Board member, Stephanie Comptoyes, who uh, was a volunteer for Bees in the D and very active with them and was always reminding us about the butterflies, and she lives right across, so she lived right across from Normandy Oaks Park. Um, and was very invested in that park and the design of it as well. Um, she passed away this last year, and part of what we're doing with this um, bee, beehive installation in Normandy Oaks is honoring her memory. And the Bees in the D um, people who know her as a volunteer and remember her um, are dedicating this specifically to her, and they're covering the cost of the dedication part of it as well. So this is a, this was, all kind of came together as, over the past two years, um, in that context. Um, however, I will say this is uh, our first installation of beehives in uh, Royal Parks, but we hope it's not the last. Um, we had several sites that we were looking at just for this one, including um, the Arboretum was another place that we were looking. So I did take the names of the beekeepers who called and wanted to um, talk to us, and I'm hoping to get them in front of Parks and Rec and see what proposals they have for us. Um, but with that, I'll move approval of this item today.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bruce. Discussion? Mr. Colo?
Uh, I, I just want to take a second, and um, Commissioner Macy mentioned Stephanie. I, I just want to say uh, some more nice things about her. Uh, she's been, uh, she passed about a year ago now this month, and I actually ran into her uh, system while the other day. Um, she's very missed. She was a very passionate, um, uh, very passionate and involved member of this community. So she was a great person. I'm, I'm happy that we are honoring her memory like this.
Not to say, you know, echo the same words about Stephanie and um, you know, the fact that I, and, and just, you know, I, I'm very grateful because I wouldn't even know where we would find beekeepers in Royal Oak. I mean, you'd have to, it's not just maybe a Yellow Pages thing, so I'm very glad that, it sounds like there's a global movement in the community. Uh, they came up, we had their contact information. I think what Commissioner Macy said for other activities within the city. This one, particular one, is centered around the memorial for an individual. So um, this is where this kind of makes sense now, but that doesn't mean it's an exclusive opportunity um, that can't be um, looked at for other parks and even other parts in Normandy from our um, our valued beekeepers here. So I think um, I, I appreciate Commissioner Macy taking the lead on that, and uh, let's get them active, you know, um, and um, you know, move forward. So we'll look for something back from Parks and Rec uh, with our local beekeepers as well. Anybody else? All right, well, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Bruce?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right, that brings us to J. Uh, which would be Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. Um, this is a Arbor Day proclamation, and I just think it's important to draw attention to it. Um, we are a tree city for the quarter, fourth year in a row. Um, I don't think anyone was here on this commission at that time when uh, this, uh, this started. Um, and I see Commissioner Bruce doing some math in her head now. Okay. Um, so th, th, this is, I mean, how amazing, how many commissions have come and gone and have continued this dedication to the tree canopy and being a tree city. Uh, this is uh, proclamation comes from the Bramall Alvaris Board, who is doing their part to keep the city green and moving forward. Um, I just want to thank them. I know I see Eric Phillipsky here, um, head of DPS. I believe there's an event on uh, Thursday, April twenty-ninth, that this uh, coincides with, if he wants to give a quick update on that.
That's correct. It's going to take a little different form. Uh, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Fournier. Um, it will take a, a different form this year, um, and that's, we're kind of piecing it together. We'll still be at the Arboretum. Uh, we might not have a marching band this year to, to play us out when we plant a tree, but um, we'll have some sort of uh, you know, small entertainment in that way, obviously a social distance um, gathering. But uh, we would invite all to attend and keep your eye out on social media and some of the other uh, outlets the city has. We'll, we'll announce the specifics once those have been determined.
Well, Mr. Phillipsky, at first I was stumped about how you're going to go about this, but I appreciate you going out on a limb and leaving us with a great opportunity here uh, to celebrate Arbor Day.
Thank you.
You, you can't take them all. You cannot take all at once.
Oh. All righty, anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Colo, you going to make a motion to this effect?
Yes, I'm sorry. I like to um, move uh, passage of this uh, this proclamation.
The motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner- All right, discussion? Start with Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Phillipsky. Um, this brings us to item eleven, which is the approval of the March twenty twenty-one Traffic Committee Resolutions. Ms. Donahue?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice. I'm here to present recommendations from the March twenty-third Citizens Traffic Committee Meeting, uh, which is chaired by Dan Gode. Uh, I have four resolutions to recommend here for you tonight. Um, so the first one had to deal with our agenda item six A from that meeting, uh, where we had a request to look at speeding and truck traffic issues on Vincetta Boulevard, and this was from Woodward to Twelve Mile. Um, and we also had a request to help uh, prevent drivers from ignoring an existing stop sign that's out there for northbound Vincetta at Longdale. Um, so based on traffic counts and accident history, there is not currently a speeding issue on the street or an excessive number of trucks. Uh, because it is a major road, adding a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit sign near Twelve Mile Road would be appropriate. Um, there's already a speed limit sign at the other end of Vincetta near Woodward. Um, so that's one of the recommendations of the Traffic Committee. And then um, looking at the criteria that the Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, that's, I'll just call that the Michigan Manual from now on. Um, the existing stop sign on Vincetta at Longdale um, currently doesn't uh, meet any of the warrants for a stop sign. And however, the Traffic Committee is recommending that that stop sign remain in place. Um, and we did hear from a, a lot of people on that street that also want that stop sign to remain in place. And so that's what the committee is recommending. Um, while studying the corridor, we did observe a couple of crashes at a different intersection at, at Greenleaf and Vincetta. And that's the only all-way stop on that section of the corridor. And so um, we're recommending adding additional stop signs within the median of Vincetta itself for east-west traffic, and that's just, again, to help reinforce that that is an all-way stop. Um, and because it's an all-way stop, the all-way plaques should be added to all of the stop signs at that intersection. So that's another uh, recommendation included here. Um, and then one repressor did ask that we look at installing sidewalks a, across the median of Vincetta. Um, currently, there are none that kind of get you from one side to the other across the Boulevard, um, except north of Twelve Mile near the school. So um, looking at this, it's something that we could uh, look at putting into our twenty twenty-three sidewalk program, and we're actually working in that part of the city. Um, and so we're just recommending, you know, that, that we look at it at that time. Um, so that was all of item six A. Um, item six B had to deal with Hoffman Avenue. Um, this is at the south end of the Six Mile and East Hudson. Um, and the, the request was to install speed humps there. Uh, so we measured the traffic at a couple of locations along the corridor, uh, both showing that the eighty-fifth percentile speed was under twenty-five miles per hour, and the volume of traffic was at the nice low end for a residential street. Um, so based on the traffic study, the committee is recommending denial of the request to install speed humps on Hoffman. The next item is uh, a, a popular topic here, um, the five cut-through street off of Woodward, just south of Thirteen Mile Road. So that's Albert, Merrill, Parker, Warwick, and Trafford, uh, which we've talked about several times in the past here. Um, so the area was studied several times, like I said, but starting back in twenty eighteen. Um, and we've seen that there is some speeding and some volume issues to various degrees on each street. So this past December, the commission directed staff to get feedback from the neighborhood for several solutions to help guide the commission in directing some sort of traffic improvement or traffic change out there. Um, so staff did create an online survey for residents and sent letters to let them know how to, to take the survey. And it was available from January fifth until February fifteenth of this year. Um, overall, the response rate was pretty good. We got about thirty-three percent of the residents responding to us. Um, so actually a little bit better than what I was expecting. Uh, and we also had a really good distribution um, in terms of ages, in terms of gender, and also time living on the street. So it seemed like a pretty representative response rate. So I will go through kind of the, the broad strokes of what we found and what we're recommending. And then, of course, if there's any questions, feel free to stop me. I'm going to share my screen here. Oh, uh, shoot. Carol, is there any way you could give me permission to share my screen?
You're all set now, Holly?
Thank you. Okay, can you see that? My screen just went kind of crazy here. Yes, thank you. Okay, so, um, we heard from about uh, forty percent of the residents on each street. So this is just kind of a graph showing um, who responded on each street and a, a map here of, of where we heard from people. So again, a pretty good response rate from everybody. Um, and then we also asked residents the really basic broad question. Do you, do you think there's a traffic problem on your street? And we got a pretty overwhelming yes, seventy-one percent uh, overall from all streets combined. And you can see here kind of the various percentages per street who think there's an issue. So a lot of people are unhappy with traffic issues on their street and want some sort of solution. Um, so we presented three basic solutions for um, residents to give us comments on and to give us feedback. The first one had to deal with the very simple option of installing prohibitive signage. Um, so we looked at decreasing cut-through traffic um, by offering four different signage options. We could prohibit westbound traffic coming from Woodward during the morning hours. We could prohibit eastbound traffic coming from Coolidge during the afternoon hours. Um, we could do both of those options together, or we could do nothing. Um, and overall, as you can see here on the, the pie chart, fifty percent of the respondents didn't want any of this to happen. Um, but we did see a pretty good number, thirty-two percent wanted both options installed. Um, when we looked at the level of interest, so we also kind of asked people how strongly they felt about a particular option. Um, and so we had roughly, you know, the same amount that were for it as were against it. So not really an overwhelming uh, concept here, what we should do. Um, we did get some typed comments as well, and most of them centered around um, accessibility to homes. They didn't want to be having a hard time getting home from work every day or whatever. Um, so residents also stated that they would like the ability to ignore the signs at times of the day. um, which of course we really don't have the ability to, to do, and the police couldn't really enforce that. Um, so installing the no-turn or do-not-enter signage, definitely the easiest and most cost-effective option. Also the easiest to remove if we found that it was problematic. Um, should be noted that a lot of drivers would probably still disobey these signs even if they did get installed. And uh respondents were roughly split in half whether or not to install these. So without more confidence that they're really going to solve a problem, and more people in favor of having them, the Traffic Committee does not recommend that we move forward with any of the restrictive signage. That's the first potential option kind of struck down. Um, the second option had to do with traffic calming, um, something like Refuge Islands or pedestrian uh or, or like bumpouts. So um, this option is kind of nice because you don't have to do it necessarily on all five streets, um, because its only purpose is really to slow down traffic, not necessarily decrease any cut-through volumes. Um, Albert and Trafford were the two streets that seemed to be the most in favor of some sort of implementation here. Um, and then when we actually looked at the level of interest for those two streets, which are the bottom two graphs here, Albert and Trafford, um, it appears that Trafford's really the only one with a majority of residents in favor or somewhat neutral um with the option. And it should be noted that Trafford had the highest speed of all five streets. They're at thirty-one miles per hour, which is really high for residential. We normally see twenty-seven, twenty-eight and think that that's a little bit high. Um, so it looks like, I looked at it a little bit closer once we got the feedback from the residents. I think we can fit a couple of these um calming islands at either end of Trafford uh without taking away any of the on-street parking for those residents, because all the negative feedback really centered around, I don't want to lose any parking. It's already hard enough for us to park on our street. So um, I think we have a good way to give a good solution to that street. Um, and so that ultimately is what the Traffic Committee recommended moving forward with. Okay, the third option that we had, um, is something that we experimented with back in twenty nineteen, and this is doing a partial road closure for each of the five streets, um, just west of the businesses off of Woodward. And that would be to prevent any traffic from going westbound on these five streets. Um, again, we did the, a pilot study of this back in twenty nineteen, just using, you know, traffic control and traffic barriers. And we did see reduced speed and volume on each of the streets. Uh, we also saw that a ton of people ignored the traffic control and, and drove, you know, the wrong way anyways. Um, except for Trafford, there is a fair number of residents who are in fair, in favor of the option, um, but definitely not a majority for any of the streets. Um, only thirty-two percent overall were in favor or highly in favor of the option. So based on resident comments, uh, many people were strongly opposed to this option, uh, again, just due to the inconvenience of trying to get to their home. Um, doing something like this, a half-road closure to prevent westbound traffic on each street would be a pretty expensive solution and not something that you can easily get rid of if people are not happy with it. Um, so without more significant buy-in from the neighborhood, the committee is not recommending this as a solution. We did have one more option that we only presented to residents on Merrill. Um, and it has to do with installing speed humps. The city has not approved any speed humps in the past for a myriad of reasons. Um, but we, we looked at it for Merrill. Um, we think it might warrant some special consideration here um because its speed, the eighty-fifth percentile speed on that street was thirty miles per hour. Again, that's very high for a residential street, um, and the traffic volume especially, you know, over twenty-two hundred vehicles per day. Um, that's very, very high for residential street. Normally eighteen hundred vehicles per day is kind of the upper threshold limit. Um, when we asked if people were in favor of them, we got a fifty-fifty split in opinion, where nineteen residents were for it, nineteen residents were against it. Um, but we actually asked, you know, how strongly do you feel about this? Um, we got a much different picture here with um quite a few people being either in favor or highly in favor of this option. So while speed humps are not something that we are recommending for wide installation around the city, um, this street does demonstrate that excessive volume and excessive speed together. Um, so we recommend setting a threshold of greater than two thousand vehicles per day and an eighty-fifth percentile speed of thirty miles per hour or higher before we would even consider speed humps on any other local street in the city, and of, not to authorize them on any major roads. Uh, Traffic Committee did uh speak up and recommend that we install um the removable type of speed humps, so those, you can bolt them down into the pavement, and then you can remove them in the winter if you want. Uh, so the snowflowers aren't taking them out each year, um, or if you're just having issues with them, you have the option to take them out. Um, I checked with uh Mr. Phillipski at DPS, and he said, you know, if it's a handful, that's something that DPS could probably keep up with each year. Start installing them all over the place, that would definitely be an issue for them. But, but doing a few of them, especially as like a pilot, is something that he thought they could handle. Um, so the Traffic Committee ultimately is recommending installing speed humps on Merrill and uh traffic calming on Trafford uh this summer. We could do the work on Trafford either as a contract modification to the local road project in the area, um, or potentially DPS could even handle that. And then we would also look at uh funding these improvements using the Local Road Millage Program, because they're improvements to, to local streets.
Ms. Don, sorry to interrupt. I just had a quick question I'm stuck on right now, just with some of the data. You said for the Merrill Street, it was split down the middle, whether or not you like it, whether or not you'd want it, nineteen to nineteen? Is that what I understood?
Right, nineteen respondents, so fifty-fifty. But then when we actually asked, are you really against it? Are you really in favor of it? Different picture, only nineteen were against it.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out is the highly favored. Wouldn't the sum of those be less than fifty percent be in favor, highly favored, or is it? Like, how would that work? If they were in favor, how would you have fifty, fifty percent that were in favor? How would you have fifty-six percent that were highly favored? Is that of the people that favored it, or is that of the total population?
Um, so I, I should have put up like a pie chart first. We have, we have two questions. Do you want speed humps or do you not want them? Very simple question. So nineteen people said yes, nineteen people said no. So that's where I'm getting the fifty-fifty split. And then a totally separate question, not linked to that, so you can answer it however you want. Are you strongly opposed? Are you neutral? Are you highly favor? You know, let us know how you feel about this. And it gave us a totally different picture where people really didn't feel as strongly um against it. So people were worried about noise, people were worried about parking, um, for the people that left us comments. Um, and I think that kind of helps with the idea of doing these removable speed humps, if they become a huge problem. Not really that big a deal to get rid of them, so.
Just trying.
It's, it's confusing, I agree.
Well, I'm just like trying to go from, you know, fifty percent objected to nineteen percent objecting. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Somehow. You know, but okay, I mean, I try to.
Low sample size, that's only two or three people changed their minds, though, between a click of a mouse.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Okay, fair enough. And that's within the margin, yep, with sample size. Though we have a student T distribution greater than thirty-six, so.
Oh geez.
Some significance.
Nice.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Um, but that was kind of all I had to say about these first three items, and our last item, of course, has to do with Delamere, which I'm sure is kind of a lengthy discussion. Um, so I guess I, it's a good time to maybe take a pause and see if there's any other questions or if you wanted to make a motion or anything at this point.
Anyone? Well, I can't see the full screen, so you guys are gonna have to speak up, uh, because I'm looking at the, oh, there we go. Look at that. I mean, now this thing is like audio updated. It's crazy. Um, so does anyone, I mean, we, I think it's a good place to take a break. You know, we got three items here, and then the fourth one, we probably have a lot more discussion on. Um, anybody have any questions or motions or anything? Uh, we'll go with Commissioner Prush.
Did you just call on me?
I did, sorry, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna move over to the staff recommendation and the Traffic Committee recommendations on these three items.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubat. All right, discussion. Mr. Dubat?
Uh, I would just say that as usual, these issues were very well researched by Ms. Donahue and the Traffic Committee. I appreciate the work you put into it, and I think you've come up with, you know, reasonable uh proposals or reasons to deny in each case. Thank you.
And also, I would say that, just to echo that, you know, the amount of work you went into surveying and looking at potential people that are impacted by it, to really take the anecdotal and really understand how people feel about this, the engagement process. We don't have to do these things, but the fact that we're doing them and we care and we're concerned, and the Traffic Committee is listening to it, and the Commission's listening to it, and staff is really pushing forward with it. Holly, or I'm sorry, Ms. Donahue, um, thank you very much for those efforts. Um, Krishna Colo, and then uh.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayer. Uh, so first I have a quick question about the um stop signs on the Greenleaf. Um, bridge, the, the, the Vaiduk, uh, they're crossing. Um, just so I'm clear, are the stop signs, they're on the corner of Vincetta and Greenleaf on either side. They're not actually on the crossover, correct? You're not adding, you're not, you don't stop at the stop sign, proceed through Vincetta onto the crossover and then stop again?
Could be stopping again.
You would be stopped, okay, yeah.
Issues, and people just fly through and continue their turn instead of stopping and making sure there's no cross-traffic coming.
Gotcha.
Um, so, but they won't impact, you know, the, the adorable bridges and stuff that are there. We have good grass areas where we can fit those stop signs.
Okay, perfect. That's the, that, that was a big question I had. Um, I'm sorry, my five-year-old is trying to join this meeting right now. He has a lot of uh input he wants to give on this. Um, so uh, and thank you for that clarification. And then my, I, I just want, I go some comments of uh, uh, the mayor, uh, Commissioner Buck. Um, when we had this, this Merrill, Albert, Trafford um parking issue, it, it was, it was a big thing at one of my first meetings, and here we have a two-hundred-and-twenty-page packet of so much data. I mean, uh, thank you for the thoughtful research into this. Uh, thank you for going through it, and, you know, was, citizens weren't happy with the first, or it was a mixed bag of uh what people wanted um in the first initial recommendations from late last year. And I, I'm just happy that we were able to do some community outreach, really get people involved, and um let people be heard in this decision-making process. So uh, thank you. I look forward to these uh changes.
Bruce?
I, I'm just gonna comment here briefly on the Merrill issue. Um, I, I think this is a good solution, and hopefully it reduces not only the traffic issues, but also the anxiety and concern of the people who live right there. Unfortunately, because the Woodward crossover is right there, and it's, it's a very convenient shortcut to get over to Coolidge, especially if you're on your way to Beaumont Hospital, um, to avoid the, the big intersection of Thirteen Mile and Woodward. Um, i- it's very tempting, and um hopefully that this, the speed bump issue will mitigate that a little bit. Um, but I guess I wouldn't be at all surprised that we'll see this issue back in front of us again uh for whatever reason, because I'm not confident that with that crossover there and with the temptation to avoid the major intersection, people are gonna go fast over the speed bumps and not really pay much attention to them. So fingers crossed that it really creates some kind of a solution here, but um the crossover is so, so tempting.
Anybody else? Alrighty, we'll all call for the vote uh on these three. Uh, Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Mr. Dubat?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that brings us to the last item on the Traffic Committee Resolutions on Delamere. Um, Ms. Donahue?
Thank you. Um, so as directed by the Commission back in February, uh, staff moved forward with preparing a parallel parking option for Delamere Boulevard, and then we invited all of the property owners along the block, several blocks there, um, to the March Traffic Committee Meeting. This street has nineteen out of the thirty-one um commercial-type properties uh with paved parking areas in the public right-of-way and currently no license agreements for those. Um, each of the thirty-one properties does have some paved space on site. Um, it's not clear which businesses do have enough space to accommodate some parking or to comply with um zoning ordinance requirements for on-site parking. Uh, and without, you know, current floor plans and site plans for each of these properties, it's not really something the planning division was able to um get into the details of. Uh, the paved areas in the public right-of-way allow for loading zones and customer parking spaces for private use at the expense of driver, pedestrian, and cyclist safety. And with no license agreements in the place, the city is currently liable for all of the paved areas. Additionally, the paved areas add unnecessary and excessive stormwater runoff, and converting all of those areas to grass would remove about twenty-six percent of the existing hard surface within the public right-of-way. That's a pretty substantial amount. And the city obtained traffic measurements in February, and it showed that the eighty-fifth percentile speed on the street was between twenty-seven and twenty-eight miles per hour. Um, so not great, but not too bad. And also thirty-four hundred to thirty-five hundred vehicles per day, and that's in the nice intermediate zone for a collector street like this. Um, truck traffic was measured to be only about two percent of traffic, which is um considered pretty low. And of course, I have to give the caveat that this was done during a pandemic. It, it may not be fully representative of what traffic on the street is going to look like in a year or several years from now. Um, the five-year accident history uh didn't show a whole lot of, of issues out on the street. We did see two crashes that occurred near San Waset. Um, that could have potentially been caused by site distance issues for people turning off of San Waset onto Delamere. Um, there was one other accident, and it was just a standard rear end, so it didn't really seem pertinent to the study. Um, it's difficult to determine how many vehicles could currently park in these paved areas within the right-of-way, but we're estimating around a hundred and twenty vehicles currently could fit out there. And we looked at aerial imagery from twenty fifteen through twenty twenty, um, just to try and get an idea of, of the parking usage on Delamere in the recent past. So for weekday parking, uh, we found that parked vehicles ranged anywhere from fourteen vehicles to forty-nine vehicles. Again, just a snapshot, um, but kind of gives you an idea of, of what the usage was like. Um, so as a compromise, that would allow for some public parking for these businesses. Staff evaluated Delamere to see if we could get the on-street parallel parking. Um, and we could do that by restriping the roadway without the, the very large excessive cost of actually moving the curb line and widening the pavement. So parallel parking is uh possible to install on one side of the street and still maintain one lane of traffic in each direction. Help to share my screen again here. Okay. Um, so the parking area that we laid out here, this is a little bit more refined version of what we, uh, what I presented at the last uh meeting when we discussed this. Um, these parking areas take into account truck turning movements into the driveways and also proximity to crosswalks. So we looked at a couple of options here. I'm, I'm really only showing you the best option that we came up with, which was uh parallel parking primarily on the east side of the street. So um that's what all of these white little um rectangles are, places where cars could fit for parallel parking on the road. Um, and again, this is, um, just to give you a reference, Normandy is up here in the upper-left corner, and then you head north to the right into each panel, and then we end at Fourteen Mile here in the bottom right-hand corner. So if we do it on the east side of the road, we get thirty-eight parking spots. And we looked at putting them on the west side of the road, and that was only twenty parking spots, so that didn't really seem like a great option. Uh, we also looked into doing um a chicane type option, as we discussed at the Commission meeting. Um, but ultimately, parking on the east side always trumped the west side, so it made sense to just keep it all on the east side. And then at the very north end, near Forty Mile, we're able to squeeze four more spots here, but not really a chicane. Um, so if parallel parking is something that the Commission wants to move forward with, uh, we would recommend that the road be signed for no overnight parking. Um, traffic lane widths with this option are ten to eleven feet, now, which is what M.D.A. would recommend, and uh one seven-and-a-half-foot-wide parking lane within the parallel parking areas. Um, we also looked to do some traffic calming here potentially to help with speeding issues. Um, so we have one little island here near Masoy, um, that would allow for pedestrians to cross over the road and um head on towards the Normandy Oaks Park or, or into the neighborhood, wherever. Um, and then we have another one here closer to Normandy, and that's really just more as a calming island that's not intended for any sort of pedestrian access. Um, so based on historic parking usage, um, this option appears to be favorable uh for the corridor as it provides thirty-eight spaces in an area that seems to be using around fourteen to forty-nine spaces daily. Uh, staff proposes a project that would include milling and resurfacing of the asphalt roadway, removing all of the unapproved paving, installing full-height curbs, installing traffic calming islands or bumpouts to help calm the traffic, creating new concrete driveway approaches to all of the private parking lots, and also any um overhead garage door locations that would need um approaches as well. Um, planting grass and trees along the corridor, installing bike route signage and striping charros, which are the shared lane markings um on the pavement. Um, so that's kind of what staff came up with. An alternate concept with angle parking was presented to us by um attorney Jim Razor. I believe he's on the call tonight, so um, uh, we'll, we'll uh get into that a little bit here, and I'll kind of present what, what staff found with this. Um, but as noted in public comment, Jim Razor is representing several of the. Um, but as noted in public comment, Jim Razor is representing several of the businesses on Delamere um and emailed us a conceptual design for angled parking a few hours before the Traffic Committee meeting. He stated that the businesses were willing to enter into license agreements and to fund repaving of the parking areas. Um, and then they also hired Noah and Fraus engineers to prepare these conceptual plans. Um, so that it's angled parking and it has bumper blocks um to protect the sidewalks so that cars aren't parking and hanging over onto the sidewalk. Um, we didn't hear any negative feedback from any of the businesses. I'm not sure that I can say that all nineteen businesses are definitely in favor of it. Um, but we certainly didn't hear any negative feedback about the angled parking option. Um, a few of the businesses did say that they did not like the parallel parking option. So I'll kind of um walk you through what was submitted to us um from Mr. Razor. And then I kind of took that design. They were nice enough to share the CAD file with us um and kind of put it on this type of layout with an aerial image in the background. And then staff made some tweaks, you know, in order to make it comply with what we as a city would require out there. Um, so first, just the, there's three images here um of what Noah and Fraus prepared. That's just a little bit more zoomed in, but the same idea. Here's Normandy and heading to the right is to the north. Um, so this is the first block, you know, up to Masoy. There's not a whole lot of parking and right here at the very end, um there's some parking. Um, again, angled parking and then these little rectangles are the bumper blocks that keep cars from going over into the sidewalk. So this is page two. Um, this would be from Delamere Court to Dakota Road here. Again, some parking areas. Um, a few of these uh grayed-out areas would be like landscapes, I think grassed area. And then uh from Dakota again to the north, mostly on the west side of the road here on the bottom with some of the landscaped areas. And then the final sheet here takes us out to fourteen mile. So here's Samoset. Um, a little bit more parking here and here, and then we get up to fourteen-mile road uh with no additional parking in these areas. Um, so as I mentioned, we uh took a look at this design. We got it the day of the meeting, so I really didn't have time to give a whole lot of meaningful feedback uh at the Traffic Committee meeting. Um, but we did take a look at it afterward um between me and and a couple engineers here um and made some modifications to make it meet the city standards. And that's what I have here on the next page. Um, you can see the angled spots here all kind of in uh yellow with the bumper blocks shown. Um, the biggest changes here was rotating these spaces to be a little bit more angled and to be deeper. Um, these would be nine-foot-by-twenty-foot parking stalls. Um, and the key thing here was to make sure that they're actually twenty feet deep. Um, what was submitted to us was only eighteen feet deep. Um, and also it it was overhanging over the back of curb, so cars could be kind of hanging out on the roadway. It is a wide road, um but it it seems really odd to me to have vehicles, bumpers kind of hanging out into the roadway. Um, and twenty-foot is standard recommended across the country and it's what we have, you know, throughout our city. Um, for reference, on uh Washington, which is probably the most familiar area with everyone uh that has angled parking, those stalls are twenty-five feet deep. They're pretty comfortable to turn into, back out of, see what what's coming at you before you actually enter the roadway. So eighteen feet is is really narrow and something uh we were concerned with. Um, so we had to rotate the spots and skew them a little bit more to be closer to thirty to thirty-five-degree angled spots, and then again, make them a little bit deeper. Um, we deleted several spaces that either encroached within the twenty-five-foot um site-distance triangle at intersection um or some of the um spots that were originally shown were actually covering up driveway approaches or inhibiting some access to the approaches. So with these changes, um it's quite a bit different. It's fifty-five parking spaces um is what we were able to come up with this option. Um, as Mr. Goddick noted in the public comment, the Traffic Committee ultimately didn't really see this as a traffic issue and didn't want to endorse or object to either um no parking, parallel parking, or angled parking. So they requested that I come to you tonight and provide kind of a side-by-side comparison of the possible options and then ultimately for your uh discussion and of course decision. Um, so I prepared a table. This is in your commission letter as well, um but just kind of, again, trying to do a side-by-side comparison. I'll do it a little bit here. So this table presents the options with on-street parallel parking. That's the first column here. Um, the angled parking that was submitted uh and done by Noah and Fraus. And then the third one is the angled parking, um but with the city's changes uh to make it meet our requirements. Um, there's notes here if you want to go back at any point and and look at images in your own packet. Um, it kind of references where you can find those in the extremely long attachment to this commission letter. But um, uh, a number of spots that we would be able to provide with these options. We would get thirty-eight spots with a parallel parking option. Um, eighty-one spots were proposed by Mr. Razor, um and ultimately we changed that down to fifty-five spots. Um, looking at hard-surface area removed, and this of course has to deal with stormwater runoff, and we could remove around twenty thousand square feet um with a parallel parking option, which turns, you know, all that area into green space. Um, and then when we actually looked into the details and made some edits to the the para, excuse me, the angled parking option, it was around sixty-four hundred square feet uh that could be removed. Um, so it's about a difference by about a factor of three. Um, in terms of rainfall, this would equate to about eliminating nine thousand gallons of uh of runoff for every inch of rainfall if we did the parallel option compared to three thousand gallons uh for the angled option, just to kind of give you a a perspective on that. Um, we kind of looked at the trees here. Um, I didn't really want to go into too much detail on it. We're estimating we could probably squeeze in around fifty trees or so if we do um the parallel parking option. If we're looking at the angled option, um you might be able to fit a few of those trees in those little green islands, but it'd be pretty tricky, um especially considering some site distance issues at the driveway. So um, that's why I didn't want to go into too much detail, because I didn't want to kind of over-design everything, but um, there is some opportunities for additional trees, even with the angled option, just further down the road where we don't have any angled parking. Um, where where there's already green space, so we could uh potentially increase the tree canopy either way. Um, in terms of funding, uh, kind of touched on this at the last meeting, we have four hundred thousand set aside to do the roadwork out there, which is really just resurfacing the road and doing some spot curb repairs and then restripping the pavement. And then we had planned to use uh CDBG funds to take care of the grass and the tree planting and installing full-height curb wherever we needed um in addition to the spot curb repairs. Um, so we did a much closer detailed estimate here and got about a hundred and eighty thousand for the CDBG portion. So a total of around five eighty when you're looking at parallel parking. Um, and then with the angled parking, the roadwork is is the same, so same four hundred K. Um, we came up with um three hundred and fifty thousand uh for the angled parking installation. Um, typically, adjacent property owners do fund improvements if if they build something under a license agreement. Um, in this case, depending on the property, that would be around fifteen thousand to forty-five thousand per property, depending on, you know, how much area they have. Um, CDBG funding is also an option here if that was something the commission wanted to prioritize. Looking at license agreements, um obviously, we we wouldn't need any with the parallel parking. Um, if we uh move forward with angled parking, um we're talking about at least seventeen separate agreements that would be required, uh potentially more. I'm not sure, but other properties uh might want to come forward and apply for parking areas in front of their businesses as well. Um, so we might want to consider the criteria that we would set uh for demonstrating the necessity for parking, if if we would even consider that for any other properties. Um, note that any of the parking spaces in the public right-of-way would be for the general use of the public. So these are not spots that would be owned by the businesses. They could not be signed by the businesses for their private use. It would still be considered public parking no matter who's funding it or paying for it or who has a license agreement for it. Um, looking at the lane widths, again, if we move the parallel parking, they're they're much narrower, narrower were. It's a hard word for me to say. Um, uh, ten to eleven feet wide, that's the M.D.A. standard. Um, narrower lanes do do help with some traffic calming. People tend to slow down a little bit if they don't feel like they have a whole road to to speed up along. Um, and then with the angled parking, we're looking at what we have out there right now, which is about fifteen-foot-wide lane. Um, that of course can be helpful if you're trying to back out of an angled spot. You want that little bit of extra comfort um to see before you you hit somebody. Um, and then finally, safety issues. Um, you know, I I spent a lot of time trying to find, you know, what people are saying about parallel parking versus angled. And you can find studies that tell you both are evil, both are great, one is better than the other. There's really not a consensus out there. Um, but safety issues to consider with parallel parking, of course, you can, you know, open your car door into traffic. Potentially, you got to walk in the roadway to get around and get up onto the sidewalk. Um, and then when you're looking at angled parking, there's the issue of backing out um into either cars or bikes, limited site distance. So um, that's a summary of what we came up with here, what we presented and discussed at the Traffic Committee meeting. And then also the the edits that we came up with after the meeting regarding angled parking. So I provided a resolution for for the parallel parking option, just so we had something to work with. Um, but of course, based on your discussion, you can see where that takes us. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Uh, if we can switch out of presentation mode so I can see everyone, that would be helpful for me. Uh, perfect. There we go. Um, any questions for Ms. Donahue from the commission? Commissioner Dubak?
Um, Ms. Donahue, thank you again for your thoughtful research and uh, you know, counsel that's been put into this. Um, you remind me, your original uh proposal for the Traffic Committee to research, uh I believe included zero parking spaces, is that right? Um, do you know how many are are currently there of these uh makeshift spaces in the right-of-way?
We're estimating, like, a lot, a lot of it's not striped and people just kind of park as they feel, um but we are estimating a hundred and twenty cars could fit out there right now.
Okay. Um. And you said, was there unanimous uh opposition to the parallel lanes or you just had a few vocal folks at the uh Traffic Committee that were opposed?
Um, I I think only a few people directly said that they were opposed to it. Um, I I didn't get a whole lot of like, lies as to why they were opposed to it. They just were opposed to it. Um, and I didn't have anyone in favor of it. I can tell you that.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Colo?
It's my first time using Zoom. Sorry about that. Um. I, this was a, it's extremely informative, Ms. Donahue. Thank you once again for putting this together um and preparing this. Um, you know, Mr. Mayor, I I do see Mr. Razor here and there is a, you know, we we heard one proposal. I think there's a competing proposal. Um, maybe, Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, we could hear from Mr. Razor, then ask Ms. Donahue some questions uh based on what we hear to kind of uh go back and forth like that.
Yeah, we can do that a couple of different ways. I can do Merrill privilege, or if you guys want to vote on like minutes or something like that, you guys just decide what you want to do. Um, you can always object to my Merrill privilege if I give him ten minutes. You want to go down that route? And a vote with the best.
Uh, knowing how Mr. Razor can talk, I would say ten minutes and we'll end up at fifteen.
Okay.
Thanks, Grant. Thanks, Commissioner Colo. I appreciate that.
So, so Mr. Razor, um unless I see anyone chime in here to object uh to to call a vote on it, I um, thank you for being here tonight. I know you represent, we heard of these state businesses tonight. Um, I, you know, Ms. Donahue did a good job kind of explaining the proposal. And so, you know, hopefully in ten minutes, you can enlighten us a bit on some of your thoughts and then um stick around for any Q and A. Uh, so we would, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, uh Commissioners, uh City Manager and uh City Engineer. Um, we actually wrote a letter in February before this came to you the first time proposing angled parking, indicating our issues with angled parking uh and indicating we'd be happy to enter into license agreements for those spaces. Um, there was some back and forth about using Noah and Fraus, the city's consulting engineer. I'm very appreciative that Ms. Donahue allowed us to use them. They already had the drawings. Uh, and I found Brad uh Bricknell to be very, very helpful. Also, I received a letter today and I'm sorry it was so late. But their uh landscape architect wrote me a letter. He was on vacation. Also, the thirty-five uh degree angle parking plan that was uh given to you, I saw it for the first time on Thursday. Unfortunately, Brad uh Bricknell is on vacation last week and this week, so I couldn't pass it by him to see what he thought of it. Um, I do know that I had some conversations with him about the forty-five-degree angle parking plan. And because the roadway is so wide, he intended to strike those parking spots so that they could hang a little bit into what was once the roadway but will now be parking to maximize parking. And I have to comment, I I represent uh nine of these businesses and with all the addresses that they own, it's about fifty percent of the right-of-way on uh Delamere. And these are all great people, and I don't think that anybody really looked at Delamere as a neighborhood. I don't think anybody really looked at it other than, you know, this is some industrial stuff. But what I've learned in talking with our clients, many of whom are on the third generation, is that they have been working and employing people in uh the case of fire defense, keeping us all safe since the fifties. And I don't think anybody meant to disregard or disrespect the city by parking in the right-of-way. I think it just kind of developed like that. I can't find any records where the city objected to it. I don't think anybody had a problem with it. But the problem is arising, I think, now because we have competing interests on this street. We've got a roadway that's in terrible shape that everybody agrees needs to be fixed. We've got housing on the south end that's brand-new and beautiful. We have a gorgeous new park. So we've got a lot of competing interests, plus we've got some gentrification going on in this corridor. We've got some very, very busy gyms, two of them, one of which is owned by my client, at least as the landlord. That's about ten thousand square feet. They fill up all the parking on this roadway roadway uh when they have classes in the morning, when they have classes in the evening. And it's hard to say. I don't know when the engineer looked at the photographs, what time of day it is, but I can tell you from my clients talking to me, people that have been here for fifty years and three generations, they say all that parking is taken up at various different times of the day. And they say that it would be incredibly deleterious to their businesses, to their property values, and to the commerce which is occurring on the corridor to have that parking disappear. But I want to stress to you that my clients are coming to this commission in a spirit of cooperation. Uh, a spirit of trying to uh really compromise and be collaborative with the city. I mean, indeed, the plan that we presented gets rid of one-third of the parking. So we're not saying we want you to keep all the parking. We want it to be ninety-degree, um, you know, which is straight-in parking. We're saying we want to cooperate with you. We want to collaborate. We're willing to eliminate a third of the parking spots. And parking has a monetary value. Parking is worth about twenty thousand dollars a spot to build, so we already have parking that's a hundred and twenty spots. Our plan keeps, where's my, where's my cheat sheet on this? Our plan keeps about one-point-five-six million dollars' worth of that parking intact, or seventy-eight spaces. The city plan eliminates one-point-six-four million dollars' worth of parking and leaves thirty-eight. The compromise plan that I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Noah and Fraus eliminates about one-point-one-million dollars' worth of parking. So it's important to think about that and the effect. Now, I know that the master plan is old and rickety, but it's our master plan. And I know that it's going to be updated, and I think it's a terrific opportunity for the master plan to reflect what Delamere is going to be. But right now, our master plan says that one of the goals of planning is to ensure adequate parking is provided to meet growing demand. And it also says, since the city nears buildup, planning efforts should be focused on maintaining existing neighborhoods and promoting the viability of existing commercial centers. And this is an existing commercial center. This employs a lot of people. And it also indicates the master plan that large employers in the city should be encouraged to stay and provide jobs for residents. Everybody knows this has been a terrible year for business. I mean, everywhere, everybody is getting killed. And the fact is, is that these business owners are willing to enter into an agreement that is completely cost-neutral for the city to preserve the parking. This, the plan that we propose doesn't cost the city anything. All it does is it transfers the responsibility for maintenance and upkeep and striping and parking blocks to the landowners in a license agreement. Now, when I was commissioner, we did plenty of license agreements. My accountant has a license agreement on Eleven Mile. My firm has a license agreement. The folks on Gardenia have a license agreement. We use this as a mechanism all the time to have people parking on public land. But we wrote you in February and we said we'll do license agreements. We haven't been able to maintain this land. The city of late hasn't given us permits to do it. We'll enter into a license agreement. We'll stripe it. We'll maintain it. We'll put parking. We'll put parking blocks on it, and we tried really hard to address every single concern that we heard the commission having about this parking. Also, it's pretty notable that the traffic committee said no recommendation because there's no history of accidents with this 90-degree angle parking. There's no history of people backing out into cars. There's no history of anything happening or pedestrian issues. But we recognize that we want to keep pedestrians safe, so we'll buy parking blocks. We recognize that 90-degree angle, you know, that straight-in parking, isn't very modern, so we'll modify it to 45-degree angle parking. I mean, I really feel like we're trying to work with everybody to do a public-private partnership that makes sense. And that's the headline I want to see out of this, is public-private partnership makes sense. Everybody is happy. The headline that I don't want to see is businesses moving to Hazel Park because of parking issues in this right of way. I like and respect the city engineer. I think she's very smart. However, I do believe that this plan proposed by the businesses has some legs. And let me talk about rainwater detention, because I know it's super important, and I listen to all of you. Rainwater detention is important. But I would point out that if you removed all the parking spots on Washington and Main Street in the downtown, you could also create a lot of land. If you took out all those parking spaces in the downtown, you could create 20-foot strips of grass that would work just fine to detain rainwater. No one would ever do that because we want to have commerce, so it's a balance. But I don't know if any of you saw the letter today that I received late from the landscape engineer, George Ostrowski, at Noack and Fraus. Did anyone have an opportunity to see that? So may I share my screen and show it to you? Because I think it's directly, you know, on point with what I'm talking about.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Razor, just maybe you had just a two or three minutes here.
Okay, great. So, and again, you know, a lot of vacations going on, but I think you can see it, right? Letter from George Ostrowski. Can you all see it?
We can see it.
Okay, great. So I'll let you guys read it. It's not that long.
All right, I think we all had a chance to read it. We'll give you 60 seconds and timing to be respectful of the commission's direction.
Okay, hold on a second. I want to stop sharing. So this is pretty exciting. Here's what this gentleman says. George says that the rain gardens that we would create in those parking islands would capture as much rainwater as the grass that was planted, and here's why. The 4,400 square feet that we designed into this plan as rain gardens are about 18 inches deep. They capture 18 inches worth of water for 4,400 square feet. The grass that would be planted only captures about three inches of water, because that's the nature of grass. And I don't know who would maintain it, because pursuant to the license agreements, we'll maintain the rain gardens. We'll maintain the plantings. We'll plant flowers. This is a great opportunity to have these businesses have ownership. But the exciting thing is, the rain gardens in the 4,400 square feet more than make up for the, I think, 12,000 square feet of grass that would be planted. So the fact is, we can have our cake and eat it too. We can have this parking, and we can also have rainwater detention. And what I urge you to do is I'd urge you to ask the city engineer to work with Noack and Fraus on rainwater detention. I think the goals of this should be the most rainwater detention that can be gotten, as well as the most parking that can be preserved, as well as obviously redoing this roadway. This roadway doesn't have any speeding issues, but angle parking makes it a little better. This roadway is supposedly sharrows, but this 15-foot-wide lanes will make it better. 10-foot lanes with semi-trucks and parallel parked cars gives our clients the heebie-jeebies. They're very concerned about safety with this. 15-foot lanes with sharrows with angle parking will be a lot like Washington Avenue between Lincoln and Fourth. And as a matter of fact, Washington Avenue between Lincoln and Fourth is actually five feet smaller right of way than what we had to work at with Delamere. And if you think about how good that roadway works on Washington, I think that's how good-looking and good-working this roadway is going to be. So I appreciate the time to talk to you. There's a commercial realtor that, that didn't call in because he got his signals crossed. He'd love to talk to you all if he can still call in. What he said in the traffic committee meeting is that this will be doom for the property values of these businesses. It would be just as bad as taking all the parking away from Washington and Main if you did this to this neighborhood. So what I'd like you to do is to spend some time looking at the first reformat of this neighborhood in 70 years. Consider our options. Let the engineers work on your goals. And let me work with the city attorney on license agreements that make sense for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Razor.
And if you want to hear from this realtor that couldn't call in earlier, that's fine. But, you know, he's going to say that it severely impacts the way that businesses will look at this strip and guarantees it's less viable.
Thank you, Mr. Razor. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to turn the meeting back up to this point. Now, we've had an opportunity to hear from our city engineer also a little bit more about the proposal, private proposal. Questions for either Ms. Donahue or Mr. Razor or discussion? Commissioner Macy, do you? Yeah, Commissioner Macy?
I was just going to ask for Ms. Donahue's reaction to the 150-tree number, because I had, I wrote down 50 trees from you as the, as the max, so just wanted to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think that letter was maybe a little bit misleading. It looks like what they had done is taken the length of the street, divided by the 30-foot spacing of trees, and multiplied that by two to account for both sides of the street. That doesn't account for intersections, for a ton of driveways that are out there, and for trees that are already out there. So I think that's really misleading. I actually plotted them on the plan and got, like, I think it was 48 trees is what I was able to fit. You might fit a couple more here and there, but I think 150 is really excessive.
Anybody else? Commissioner Duba.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's just get a discussion going on this. You know, as I first asked Ms. Donahue, you know, her original proposal, we've been very clear with staff for years now, and now we're starting to see some results that we want green infrastructure worked into, you know, city infrastructure projects. And I personally have been hammering on it regularly for many years. So what she has done in finding an opportunity in our road plan to do that, beautify an area, maximize green space, maximize the value of the public space for our residents, she did exactly what we had asked. And then when she brought forward that proposal, the business owners expressed some, some concerns and some legitimate concerns. And so we gave her direction to, to create a compromise plan. And so she brought forward this parallel parking plan. So, yeah, I'm a little, it's a little frustrating to hear some of the business owners saying that, you know, we're not listening, just, you know, doing what we want to do. What I want to do is maximize the green space and not have any parking at all. But I, I am willing to compromise and allow for the parallel parking, 38 spaces on that street. I, I want to like Ms. Donahue's compromised angle parking plan with 55 spaces, but it sacrifices, you know, three-quarters of the green space to add, you know, 17 parking spaces. And that, that's a, that's a tough calculation for me. So I'm, you know, I'm looking at what is the highest and best use of this property for our residents. You know, what's going to create the better beautification of the street. I'm sympathetic to the business owners, which is why I'm supportive of, of the parallel parking plan, but I'm having a really hard time seeing the public benefit in, in the other proposals.
Commissioner Collo, I have next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree with Commissioner Duba. But I still think that, I, I want to keep on looking at this in my eyes, and as you know, Ms. Donahue, one thing that really, I mean, we've set goals of green infrastructure, of making the city more preferable, of adding, keeping water out of basements, and you ran with that goal very well. I mean, you took away 20,000 square feet of hard surfaces at your first crack at it. With the plan that you see presented, the, the compromise plan that you made, the 56-inch angle parking spot, whatever that number is, are there any other ways that you see that we can add any other infrastructure to that so that at the end of the day, we have the same impact as removing 20,000 square feet of green space, yet we still have those angle and parking? Because I, I think that's a real compromise.
I wish, yes, that would be great. If this was a sandy area, absolutely. I would say, let's put some pavers in along the edge of the road. We'll capture a ton of storm water. Great, off we go. This is clay, however, so if you want to do something like that, you're looking at very large undercuts with stone to store the water, because it takes forever for that water to actually dissipate. And really, what you're probably doing is installing an underdrain, letting it sit in the stone for a while, and then it all goes right into our sewer anyways. It just gets there slower. So it helps with peak flows, but it, it doesn't reduce the volume that we're treating. You know, rain gardens here, I don't really see as feasible. These, the little landscaped areas that were shown, they would look nice if grass, they'll hold, you know, a little bit of rainwater as rain gardens, though, like, they, they only function if you can get the water to them. And these are up and sloping down towards the road, so you can't take the road water and push it up into these rain gardens without a vast network of piping everywhere, which is kind of, the cost benefit there really doesn't make sense. So in my opinion here, with, with the clay soils that we have, the best stormwater management that makes sense is to maximize our grass areas, plant as many trees as we can to soak up that rainwater. But investing in some sort of massive underground stormwater infrastructure probably doesn't make a lot of sense here.
And does that include the, you know, the 18-inch cutout, you know, the, the rain gardens that Mr. Razor spoke of, and, you know, their potential to take away that much water? So you're saying that it will just go back into the system anyways? It wouldn't dissipate?
Well, the issue, yes, that, but the other issue is like, unless the rain all funneled to those spots from the clouds, like, but only raining those spots, great, but it rains everywhere, and the water hits the surface and flows to the nearest catch basin. So only the water that falls onto those rings or green areas, or the water that maybe drains off the sidewalk and gets those areas, would actually be detained and put into the ground or into underdrains. I really don't see them having a huge impact. They'll have some impact, for sure. You know, they're, it's not a negative thing to have that there, but... Again, does it make sense to do an 18-inch undercut to store a very small volume of water when you could just have grass and manage to collect quite a bit of stormwater that way?
And just a last question, with this 18-inch undercut, not being an engineer or having ever taken a engineering class, what is an 18-inch undercut, and is that expensive?
Yes, so the undercutting is basically, you have your pavement cross-section, so let's say eight inches of concrete. You have maybe six inches of stone under that, and that's your pavement. Anything below that is the subgrade, and that's, if you dig into that, that's called undercutting. So you would dig another 18 inches, and the deeper you go on any construction project, the cost, you know, they, they keep going up and up because that's a lot more material that you have to import to fill those areas with, you know, stone, and you also have to get all the old clay materials out of there. So, like, we only undercut when we absolutely have to. If the road is falling apart and it needs a subgrade improvement, generally, we don't do it. When we're doing rain gardens or green infrastructure, I'm usually going about 12 to 18 inches into that subgrade, though, just to, again, install some stone and, and give the, the rainwater a place to, to sit until it can dissipate. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry, I'm getting, I'm going through my scan. All right, Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is an area, in fact, at the Planning Commission, we've talked a little bit about, in, in, sometimes in other contexts of the changing near, changing nature of Royal Oaks industrial areas. Heavy industry is disappearing across America. The knowledge industry is taking its place, so uses, business uses are changing. I will point out here that businesses across Royal Oak have, are required to provide parking for their employees and customers. And yet, here we have businesses or buildings that for 50 or more years have enjoyed free use of property that belongs to the people of Royal Oak. So while I'm, I'm sensitive to the needs of business, I also am sensitive to the obligations of businesses to provide for their employees and customers. Mr. Razor, use the word gentrification, and I want to, I want to correct that. Gentrification is the process of wealthy people moving into neighborhoods and displacing poorer people, often people of color. That is not what's happening here. We are seeing market demand change the nature of this area. We have residential now. We have a park, a gym. We have some of the softer uses, as someone pointed out, architects, photographers, so on and so forth, less industrial-type businesses. So, and, and I am not inclined, I, I feel a little stampeded here. We have a, our, our traffic committee, we have our professional staff bringing us their best recommendations, and I'm not inclined to make that equal to the recommendations or the ideas brought to us by representatives of those businesses. I don't feel like that's a, an actual representation of the needs of this entire neighborhood, because it's not just Delamere. It's Delamere Court, and it's Fern Lee, and it's all of the businesses in this area. So, I mean, I'm inclined, and, and actually, I should, I guess I should ask Ms. Donahue this. Is this a project that has to be done this year? Will there be CBD, CBD money available next year?
My understanding is that we could build this in 2022 using the CDBG funds, and I believe that was approved earlier in consent. The Delamere was slated in there. And then if it doesn't happen, they'll backfill it with another project, another CDBG project, so.
So it seems, good, thanks. So it seems to me there's time to study this further. I'm inclined, I mean, given we, we, we heard earlier today about the advent of a new master plan. I mean, if you look at Royal Oak, very little of our city is ever going to change. Vast, vast acres of the city are residential. They're going to stay residential. But there are nodes that will change, are changing, and where the master plan would focus. And this strikes me as one of those neighborhoods, given the changes in businesses that, that COVID may have shaped for the, the long term. The changing demand that we will see with the park, with residential, I'm just inclined to want to step back a little bit on this and maybe kick this can down the road and give it some more thought rather than taking action now.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
Sorry. I guess I feel like I'm not inclined to, to kick it down the road, and it's partially because of all the work Ms. Donahue has been doing. I feel like she might come after us in our sleep if we kick this down the road one more year, after all the things we've been like, no, no, try this. No, no, go back and try this. Please try this 45th thing that we've asked for you to do. I feel like we've been brought now, as Commissioner Duba pointed out, multiple alternatives. I don't think any of them is perfect. I don't think any of them is going to make every- I don't think any of them is going to make everyone happy. But I, I do think that asking her to wait and do it again is a lot, maybe too much to be asking of our professional staff, who, this is not her only, this is not the only thing on her plate right now. So I, I, I just, I just feel like she's, she's done a lot of work, she's brought us some solutions, and now we have to make the hard call. So I guess I'm not in favor of kicking it down the road.
Hello?
With Commissioner Douglas's extensive PR background, I would come up with a different word besides kicking it down the road, perhaps. But I would think, my opinion is that the same as actually both Commissioner Macy and Commissioner Douglas. I don't think staff should do any more work on this. I think they've done enough work. I also think that there might be another idea out there. I think at this point, if there is another idea to be had, we ask it to come from the business owners, knowing that right now, our new baseline is the fifty-six spots that Miss Donahue has presented as one option, or the parallel parking. Those are the, the two baselines. If you can find something better that comes up with that same, and, and my big thing is finding that same twenty thousand square feet of concrete space and how we can mitigate the water from that. So if someone can come up with a solution for that, because we've not seen that yet, that, that solution's not there yet. If someone can present that solution that's viable and not just taking the length of the road, dividing it by thirty and two, you know, you're coming, that, that was a shot in the dark. Again, actual plan that shows there's going to be that same savings in green space, I think it accomplishes all of our goals. So that, that would be, I think, kind of where, where I would want to head.
Anybody else? I'll go with Commissioner Hunt.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Colo. I think the fact that this is the, kind of moving with what Commissioner Douglas says, the fact that this is the first time in a number of years that we are redeveloping this area. I think taking a step back and taking a look at all the options is probably the best way to move forward with this. But in speaking, how Mr. Commissioner Colo just stated, Ms. Donahue has come forward with a number of different options. She's conceit, or I shouldn't say the word conceded, but provided a number of options after we've asked her to, you know, make her changes over and over again. I would ask that the businesses take a look at what she's provided and have a, some sort of compromise with the information that she's provided, weighing the, what both Mr. or Commissioner Dubach and Commissioner Colo stated as it relates to the green space, adding some additional, a, a realistic view of the trees that can be added. I, I would just put it back on the businesses as Mr. Colo stated.
Commissioner Purush?
Well, first of all, I, I want to join everybody in, in thanking Ms. Donahue in terms of the amount of work she's put in. She's done exactly what you've asked her in terms of our long-range planning and our interest in putting more green infrastructure into a project. And she's done that, and she's managed to do that even in terms of modifying the plan a little bit to deal with some of the, the concerns of the businesses in that area. We all say that we want to extend this plan for this time period to allow the businesses to come back yet again for another alternative and save Ms. Donahue and her department from any more work. But you know they're going to have to evaluate whatever is in front of them, and it's going to involve just as much work as if you said to her, come up with something different. Because they're going to have to evaluate whatever comes in the door from the business community. Or at least the nine people that are represented by Mr. Razor. We haven't heard from the other fifty percent very much. So I have gone back and forth on this issue multiple times over the past number of weeks that we've been dealing with it. First, thinking that perhaps it should be folded into a much larger master plan effort. But that, that's, that kind of a master plan effort is not going to be done in time, I don't think, in order to deal with this project even next year, if you were to bump it out a year, given the time deadlines that we have to work with in terms of bid specifications and contracts, and we only have four months to construct before it snows, we have all those issues. I, I just don't, I think pushing it off to allow me to develop a master plan for this area is, it's, it's not going to get done. So I, 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 at first, that was attractive to me, but I don't think the timing is going to be right in order to make this improvement happen at all. The second thing that I'm concerned about is that I drive back and forth in Delamere frequently. It's an easy way to get up to the north part of the city in terms of all the shopping around Meyer. English Gardens is much too close to my house, and it's the spring, so I'm not going there all the time. And Delamere is an easy way to get up there without feeling a woodwork and foliage. And I'm concerned that, granted, there are businesses that use the parking effectively and it, it's necessary. But there are also, as Mr. McGee pointed out in his public comment, there are businesses who are using it for unlicensed parking, vehicle parking. They're using it for display of vehicles that are for sale. They're using it for their own trade vehicles, which are too large for the spaces. I see people parking in the spaces that in an angle that pretty much includes anybody else parking in it. They're practically parallel parking on the strip. So I see a, a, a lot of uses of that space, which, which I would not like to see continued. So I, I guess at this point, I would be ready to, to go forward with the recommendation for the fifty-five spaces, the angle parking proposal by the department, which is a modification of what they receive from the business community. Because I really don't think that there's any value in, in cooking this down the road for another year. I don't think we're going to get that much. And you're saying, you know, come back with yet another proposal. I, I have no idea what it would be. You're not going to pull additional land out of the air and create more spaces for more parking or more for more green space. You've got a limited right of way to work with. We've seen all the options. Unless you start stacking cars, which is, of course, it may happen. I have no idea what other kind of parking alternative we could possibly come up with. So I think we've pretty much hit the end of the road in terms of our options, and I think it's time to make a decision. And if it were me, it would be for the angle parking that gives you the number of spaces on the right of way is fifty-five.
Anybody else? Commissioner Dubach?
I agree with Commissioner Macy that it is time to make a decision. I don't think the facts on the ground change by, by punting, you know, on this decision for another year. And I get that, you know, there's some controversy in that, you know, business owners or some of the business owners who are, have a specific vision for what they'd like. But again, I think we have an obligation to make sure we're providing the highest and best use of the space. I think we've given clear direction on creating green space, absorbing rainwater, and working on infrastructure projects. And this is an opportunity to do that, and I think we've compromised. I would prefer to see the parallel parking plan to maximize that green space. I'm wary of whether or not, because I believe the fifty-five space plan wires would still require license agreements from the property owners. And we don't even know if all the properties where we've indicated spaces are, are represented by Mr. Razor, are interested in entering the license agreements. So there's, there's a lot of unknowns there. So I guess I would move to amend Commissioner Purush's motion that in the event that the appropriate agreements cannot be reached for the fifty-five.
Commissioner Dubach, Commissioner Purush did not make a motion.
I thought you did.
No, it sounded like it, but no, I didn't.
I will make a motion then. I will move for the fifty-five space plan pending the agreements can be reached. And that, can it, should they not be reached, given the, not negotiate this plan according to this plan, then we will go with the thirty-eight space parallel parking.
Motion by Commissioner Dubach. We have a second by Commissioner Purush. All right, discussion on this motion. Commissioner Douglas?
So I will, I will vote against this motion, only because the parallel parking plan has all of the benefits that my fellow commissioners have talked about. But it is also the one that is the most forgiving of any long-range changes in use in this area. That is, if we go through the, put businesses through the expense of repaving the right-of-way, put staff through the, the hassle of issuing those licenses, and then at some future time, find things have changed substantially. A lot of money has been invested in that asphalt, whereas the parallel parking plan has lots of benefits and, I think, keeps the area more flexible. So that is why I would support the parallel parking plan.
Commissioner Dubach, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Colo? The other guy with the beard.
The more handsome one. Ms. Donahue, with the motion now as presented and recommended, we're laying sod in all these green spaces. Is there a better, if, you know, once again, just trying to squeeze every inch of potential green infrastructure here. There's been a lot of talk about natural plants and wildlife and, or native plants, rather. Is, is there a better option on the native plants to use as opposed to sod? What, what's your opinion on that?
Good, look at it, if it was an area where I can actually get some water to drain and soak and kind of sit there, then the plants help, because they actually suck up the water and allow it to evaporate better than sod would. If it's a place where I really am not getting any more than just runoff from sidewalks, for example, probably it's more of a hassle for maintenance to put sod in. Again, I don't think we'd be really opposed to either option. Like, if a business wanted to do native plants up there, that would probably be okay. Generally recommend that people don't do it, because if the city has to do work, we'll take them out and we're not putting them back. We put sod back. But beyond that, there wouldn't be any objection to it.
Okay, and i- i- am I correct that native plants do provide a better water retention than just sodwood?
Yeah, they, they can hold and suck up the water better and get it out of it. It's another way to get it out of the ground, especially clay soils help it out as opposed to trying to get it to dissipate into something very solid.
Thank you. So if it's okay at the motion maker and the secretary, can we remove the word sod from this, from the motion that was presented?
Would you like to make an amendment? Propose an amendment, Commissioner Colo?
Oh, wait, I'm, I'm looking at it, I'm not sure. Commissioner Dubach actually didn't move the recommended motion, never mind.
I think he did move it. He moved it, and it was seconded by Commissioner Purush. And so if you want to make an amendment, I see Commissioner Purush has her hand up, Commissioner Purush?
The, the only thing about substituting plant materials is if we're going to be asking the businesses to maintain this, the green areas, it's a question of asking them to maintain sod, which is grass, which they can do with a lawn mower, and maintaining native plants, which is, as a gardener, much more difficult, much more expensive, and much more time consuming. And to me, that's, that would not be an appropriate burden to put on the property owners.
Thank you, I, I thought it would be easier. I, I stand down then. I'll visit the back corner of my yard on Saturday. I'm constantly messing around with that stuff. Anybody else? So we have a motion on the table. Commissioner Hunt?
Can I apologize? If I can just get clarity with regards to the motion that's on the table, I'm working through a migraine, so I apologize. Commissioner Dubach moved to go with the fifty-five space option. And in the event that licensing agreements could not be determined or could not be agreed upon, moving with the parallel, is that correct? Okay, just making certain for clarity purposes, thank you.
All right, and, and maybe now I have a clarification on that, Commissioner Dubach. Is that on, like, switching the whole thing over if we can't get all seventeen? Or is that, you know, if ten of them do it, then there's parking, and if six of them, seven of them don't get into an agreement, because we can't come to terms, then those ones would have green space in front of it?
Well, you get down below the thirty-eight spaces if, you know, two or three of them don't want to sign the license agreement. So I would recommend that we go with the parallel plan, which I think is the superior plan.
Got it. All right. Anybody else? All right, well, I'll call for the vote then. We'll start with Commissioner Purush.
Yes.
Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
And I vote no. Okay, the motion passes. All right. Okay, so thank you, Commissioner Razor, for your presentation tonight. Hopefully, you understand the motion and communicate back to your clients who are most interested in this. And Ms. Donahue, good luck. And then we'll move on to the next topic.
Will do, Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay, this brings us to item twelve, which is the Downtown Development Authority recommendations. Mr. Twing, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. The first item as listed is a discussion of the COVID-nineteen temporary use permits. You may recall that about a year ago in June, the City Commission established the COVID-nineteen temporary use permits where staff administratively dealt with requests to deal with social distancing and some of the executive orders to provide more space for businesses. A, a lot of them, as you'll see in the summary table that's included in your packet, were restaurant facilities, some in the CBD, some which took over parking spaces in the right-of-way. We also had those that were outside the CBD that may have taken over parts of their parking lot. We also had non-restaurant businesses that took over space in order to expand for fitness operations and other activities. Some of those actually located in the city parking decks under license agreements or in the surface lots up at Cattlepa. So we had quite a variety of the requests from businesses under that COVID-nineteen process that was established back in, in June of 2020. In September, the City Commission extended what was a deadline of October, I believe, October thirty-first was when they were all going to expire of 2020. At that time, the Commission extended it through April thirtieth of 2021. Obviously, we're in April, that's the end of this month. And so we were bringing this back to the Commission to get direction on how you wanted us to deal with those facilities and operations going forward. The DDA at its March meeting received a request from the Royal Oak Restaurant Association and one business owner. And the DDA passed a resolution asking the City Commission to potentially extend those COVID-nineteen temporary use permits through October thirty-first of 2021. That was the request of the Restaurant Association as well. I don't want this to appear as the rest of it came from the DDA, because the rest came from staff, and this item was being brought by staff prior to the DDA's action and plan to be either on this agenda or the next one. Couple of the other items that we've outlined in there beyond the extension is, are there any other issues that the City Commission would like staff to address in terms of these going forward? Obviously, as I pointed out, it was planned that these facilities be temporary. They were, the submission requirements were based on them being temporary. The review and approvals that were granted administratively were entirely based on them being temporary. What temporary means, I guess, is up to, up for discussion. Given that all of the health orders and emergencies have continued to go on, I believe we've treated them in that fashion as, in, in terms of a review. You will see several that over the winter that chose to stay in operation, put up tents. Some went to igloos. Some of them added platforms in order for those igloos to set flat on the sidewalk areas and in the parking spaces. So there was a lot of kind of dealing with things as we went and dealing with them. Some also added music and other things out there in terms of heating and things that created other issues as well. created other issues as well. I guess with that, it kind of gives you the synopsis of it. One of the other things in terms of the extension that I pointed out was we do have some that have encroached into the right of way that are within the Arts Beats and Needs footprint. And there is an agreement with Arts Beats regarding their use of that area. And I won't, I don't know if Anne McLaughlin's had a chance to look at that, but you know, my read of it, it uses some words like exclusivity and some other things. So the Commission would probably have to discuss some ideas in terms of how we deal with those that are, want to continue, but are also within that footprint. Staff's recommendation is that you extend the COVID-19 temporary use permits until 10 days after all of the emergency orders are lifted and 100% capacity is granted back to businesses. Notice would be given to them once those are lifted and within 10 days it'd have to remove all of the encroachments and all license agreements would be void and null. Or through October 31st of 2021, whichever occurs first. That is the resolution that's contained at the bottom of the Commission letter. And it also extends the closure of Fifth Street between Washington and Center for that same period of time. I think that's my overview. There are a lot of attachments to the Commission letter that are just background materials in terms of prior actions and prior information. I, I won't go through those, but that's where I'll stop. If you have any questions.
Questions, Mr. Twain? Pretty straightforward. Commissioner Collo? Commissioner Collo, can you unmute, please? Can't hear you through your ear. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. I actually have a question for Ms. McLaughlin about the Arts Beats and Needs contract. We talked about this via email today. And I've been anxiously waiting to see what the answer is.
Arts Beats and Needs, the Arts Beats and Needs contract provides for the festival's exclusive use of certain areas that essentially occupy the footprint of that, which is the south, I would say the southwest portion of the downtown area from about Third Street to, down to Lincoln, west of Main Street to Lafayette. It doesn't include all of those streets and all of that area. But it does use the term exclusive use, so the, it appears that the temporary facilities and the COVID-19 permits would have to make way for that previous contractual obligation by the city to provide exclusive use of the public rights of way in those streets.
Ms. McLaughlin, now, the, the reality is, is that that's the, that's the letter of the contract stacking. But if, you know, the promoter of that event wanted to be amenable to working with those particular restaurant owners, that's totally up for, for grads. And it only affects those that are within that area that are getting the, the use. So, so that I could decide, you know, given the event could be a lot smaller this year, it may not happen, it could happen. You know, and, you know, maybe there's less vendors and things like that because of everything. So maybe that's a, you know, that's something that the, that the promoter could still work with those restaurants, but we don't have any control because we have a preceding contract that prohibits us from having another contract that conflicts with it, correct?
Yes, that's correct. If you were to extend these permits through October 31st, the, or whatever, 10 days after the emergency public health orders are lifted. If it does conflict with Arts Beats and Needs, Arts Beats and Needs would have to prevail. And, and what I mean by that is they would have the right to enforce their contract as it is written. So if, you're correct, Mr. Mayor, if they chose to work with these businesses that have been so adversely affected by the pandemic and all of the executive and public health orders, they certainly can do so. But they can also insist that the city honor the obligations that it has previously made.
Well, my guess is, is that the promoter will probably have some changes himself that he'll need to make to accommodate a different dynamic. That opens up everything. So the, you know, but, but that doesn't, I mean, for the most part, we can still move forward. It's just those particular agreements are going to have a caveat to them, pretty much, right? With our restaurants.
Yes, they would, they would necessarily have to accommodate the pre-existing agreements with Arts Beats and Needs.
Anybody else? Commissioner Collo?
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't want to get too stuck on that. I was just wondering about that answer. And I'm, like you said, Ms. Mayor, I'm sure we could work with the promoter. I mean, we're all on this together. Like this is, it's a global pandemic. There's a lot we all need to do to recover from this. So I, I just want to say, I love these spaces. I mean, these are the exclusive, one of the exclusive ways I've been able to enjoy dining in Roeloke in the last year now. And I think it's going to be one of the exclusive ways. I continue to enjoy dining in Roeloke over the next year. The pandemic's not going away. The numbers are skyrocketing here right now. It's a dangerous time. And let me just also say, anyone who can get a shot, please go get a shot. We need this to end. But in the meantime, we have the ability to add these spaces. And quite frankly, I want to see these exist potentially after COVID. I mean, this, we, we could be a destination. We're adding downtown seating. It adds to the vibrance and life of downtown Roeloke. So I, I, I hope that we can pass this potentially in the future. You know, this year I'd not be interested in a design aesthetic of any of the spaces. But I think if we continue to do this year after year, or even into next winter, I think we should look at designs and potentially what we want tents to look like, what we might want platforms or railings or anything else to look like. But, you know, right now I'd want to extend it. And in terms of a sunset date, if for some reason the emergency orders are lifted, I don't think that's going to magically make everyone feel safe to go outside. Safe, or safe to eat inside, rather. And I think restaurants will still be adversely impacted much longer after these are lifted. So I would say that we should pick a date, a sunset date. That also allows the restaurants to do their long-term planning. They can amortize the costs of building these outdoor features over a longer period of time. And once we approach that date, we'll make another determination. If it's October 31st, we'll decide for the winter. So that's, that's where I am right now. I'm, yeah.
Let me just ask a question. I mean, maybe explain a little bit more, Mr. Twain, the October 31st recommendation. Is there any difference between December 31st or October 31st? And we did this during-
I think, I think two things are probably playing into that. Normally, under normal circumstances, the sidewalk cafes that have been out and been approved for many years under license agreements and plans have run from April until October 31st. The October 31st date this time, I think that the DDA simply mirrored the request from the Restaurant Association. And that was their request. They picked that date. It wasn't. So I'm assuming it probably came because that's when the normal sidewalk cafes are up.
I'd be open to expanding it into next year when we would normally start the permits, like the April timeframe. Like, let's let it go through the winter. Early spring traffic patterns are down in the winter a little bit more as well. And to Commissioner Collo's point, it gives like a broader period of time that they can plan and invest with, especially in the winter months if they need to, you know, put a little bit more semi-permanent, you know, structures there that, you know, like tents and stuff. Just a thought. Not sure what my colleagues think. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, it seems like we should be offering, we should be saying 10 days after the emergency public health orders, that we should be saying whichever occurs last, not whichever occurs first. So that if the emergency orders are lifted on October 1st, then they've got 10 days. But if the emergency orders run through December 31st, then they can keep their, those facilities open until that point, not closed down on October 31st.
Yeah, and I think, I think at the end of the day too, I mean, you know, all the restaurants have been hit pretty hard. They got two problems right now too, because, you know, we think all this extra space and opportunity is needed, but you know, I'm aware of some of the restaurants that, you know, can't even get enough servers to even serve the outdoor space that they have either. So, you know, it's, there's always this moving thing, but to Commissioner Douglas's point, I think, one, yeah, it should be the latter. And then, you know, even if the orders are lifted and it goes out till April, give them time to wind down. It gives them time to make a nicer, better, safer investment. And come April, you know, we get back, let's say we're back to normal. They can just go with the normal, you know, what we do for outdoor dining. And they probably would be happy with that. But, but, you know, during that, that first part of next year going throughout April, I don't, I'm not advocating for anybody. I'm just thinking, you know, maybe that gives them a little extra breathing room to make up for lost time in the fall since we're having a resurgence. Just, just thinking of, you know, thinking ahead. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and make that motion. The resolution as proposed by, in the staff document, modifying the first paragraph, the last few words of the first paragraph to say whichever occurs last.
All right, so if the health orders are still going to April, that would be last. Or if they're going to February. Okay, perfect. We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas or a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion.
Did you call me, Ms. Mayor?
I did, yes.
Okay, sorry. So Commissioner Douglas, would you be open to the idea of just, I, I like the mayor's idea of extending this to April 1st of next year? Just to allow our restaurants and everyone to plan, allow the public to know it's going to be there. And then that way we have, we we can do the long-term planning now. I don't like the idea of giving someone 10 days to take it down once, you know, if, or it does happen, that's been extended. Because once you get into a season, I mean, once we get into winter of next year, there is an investment that comes with getting the portable heat, with getting the thicker tents. There, there's a lot of upfront investment. So I, my thought is to go through entire seasons. So let's, you know, if, if we're going to do this, I like the idea of doing it through an entire season. Let's go through all winter and get into the spring of next year and then make another decision.
Commissioner Collo, that would be an amendment to go from October 31st to, let's say, March 31st or something.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea, but I do think you should just propose it as an amendment to my motion.
Okay, okay.
Well, then so be it. I'd like to propose an amendment to change whatever Commissioner Douglas said to April 1st.
Motion by Commissioner Collo is a second. Motion by Commissioner Macy. Discussion.
So just to be clear, it'll, it will remain whichever comes last, so that if the emergency order extends through next May.
But if it ends, if it ends in February, it'll still go through February, March and April. Give them enough time to wind down, things like that.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll call for the vote on the amendment. Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Collo?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, now we're back to the original motion. We need discussion on the original motion that's been amended. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Collo?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Mr. Twain? Talk about second part of this one.
You do have a recommendation from the Downtown Development Authority regards the creation of a social district in the downtown pursuant to, I believe it's Public Act 124 that was passed by the state regarding the creation of social districts. The last time I looked, I believe there's roughly 39 that have been created in the state of Michigan. What you'll see is that social districts would allow licensed premises to sell alcoholic beverages in restricted fashion, 16-ounce cups, non-glass, that could be taken out of the facility and consumed in the common areas of the social district. The DDA had one of its committees meet with and include downtown business owners, not just restaurant owners, but some retailers, the police chief, as well as the Superintendent of Public Services, Aaron Flipsky. We're all, and the farmer's market manager. So it was a wide group of individuals that sat in on the committee meetings reviewing the documents and the plan that's presented to the Commission this evening. The draft plan is, is attachment three, if you wanted to reference it. Attachment two and two. Attachment one is a draft plan that the DDA looked at and it was modified. Attachment two includes some of the criteria and requirements that the MLCC puts out for local units of government in, in the creation of these so that you had that background as to what they're going to look at. As well as the requirement that each potential business establishment or licensee will have to submit to the state in order to participate in this. The plan would simply identify the areas. Then we would have to have the, an application that we submit to the MLCC for their review and approval. We would also have to have the establishments within the district. I believe we'll need a minimum of two that would want to apply to the state in order to have it formally created in, in terms of moving that forward. I don't know how much detail you want me to get into the plan, but the idea, other than establishing the boundaries, would be that it would be operational seven days a week between the hours of 11:00 AM and 10:00 PM. That was the time periods that both the police chief, the restaurant owners believed was sufficient going forward. It does the boundaries of the plan roughly Main Street from Pingree South to Lincoln to include the Hyatt Place Hotel is why it went up to Pingree. It goes roughly from Knowles to Lafayette. And again, as you'll see on the plan that's attached to the map, that's a place to the plan, it's the right of ways primarily of the streets to keep it from potentially having beverages carried into the parking decks or into other public locations. So we would have to add considerable signage identifying where the social district is and where it ends. Other areas that you'll see on the plan would be the common gathering areas, the area of the farmer's market, primarily the west parking lot and the market itself. The, the Centennial Park, once it's finished, would be that common area, common gathering area. Fifth Street, as it remains closed, Center and Washington, as well as the Fifth Street Plaza just south of Stage Crafters are all included in the potential areas. The DDA has allocated $200,000 in addition to its normal maintenance activities in the CBD. You may recall that the DDA hires Worry Free Inc. to do maintenance services in the downtown. That, that includes planting flowers, but it also includes cleaning up the streets, power washing the streets and other maintenance services. They also mow some areas downtown. So they already are contributing significantly to maintenance activities. But as part of the fiscal fiscal year 21, 22, they've allocated another 200,000. And you'll see that when you see their, the DDA budgets. As I said, it's been reviewed by both the Police Department as well as the Department of Public Services. The DDA looked at a potential logo. There is a recommended logo at the back of the plan. That logo would be required to be on each of the cups that would be provided to the establishments. Part of the, the DDA's recommendation is that they would acquire the- Uh, part of the the DDA's recommendation is that they would acquire the cups from a provider and then provide those to the establishment uh for their use. The establishment would also have to put their logo on that cup as well as indicate the date of sale uh each time one is sold. Uh, so there would be some additional items uh put on those uh those cups. Two other items that came up uh were in terms of using recyclable materials in terms of the cups. Obviously, if the DDA is buying those and the commission wants that to occur, um, we'd get a provider that's providing uh recyclable items.
Compulsible, even.
One, one other item that uh that the DDA discussed uh was potentially establish the district for a limited period of time. Um, there was no specific date given, meaning uh if it started June 1st of 2021, it would have to take some action, say, uh November 1st of uh 2021 in order for it to continue. There, there is nothing that identifies that limited time period. So if the commission wants a limited time period initially to study whether it should continue or not continue, uh that would be one item you may want to uh discuss and add to the resolution. Um, I think I'll stop there and see if there's questions.
Questions for Mr. Twain? Actually, it's funny, I had the question about the cups, as far as maybe being comfortable and you know, it's also cool that if they have their logos on it, it'll be interesting to kind of track, you know, where are the most of the patrons, you know, as a proxy, you know, if they're buying the cups and you kind of understand who's driving the the walking around town and and socializing. Um, is it a technical term, Mr. Twain, that we have to call it a social district? I mean, I know I'm not trying to be too finicky here, but is that something by law, or can we call it a social just district by all other terms, but you call it something different, you know, to brand it unique for Royal Oak?
Well, um, I I'm answering these. Uh, some of the other communities that have established social districts have given them names. Um, one is called the Twist, one is called Diamonders, they they've named them variety of things in other communities. Uh, when the DDA was considering this, they asked their uh marketing arm, their PR firm that's under contract, and they said that didn't seem to make sense, since you were trying to market it as a social district, so call it what it is. So um it was the recommendation out of this, the DDA's marketing firm uh to call it the downtown social district.
If later on, we could, if it's really successful or whatever, I imagine we could, we could rename it like, yeah, okay. Um, I saw Commissioner Macy, and then I think I saw Commissioner Colo, if I'm not mistaken, or was it Commissioner Prush? Okay, it's Commissioner Colo, so go Macy Colo.
Hi, Mr. Twain. Um, so maybe a weird question that we're, of course, some speculation, but I'm wondering, what's the vision of this social district? Like, I can, I can see the idea of want to encourage people to be outside and um, but I'm I'm struggling to see this, like, normally you'd think they'd be go to a place, right? Like, if there were park were there, you can go have a beer or wine in the park while your kids run around in the fountain. Um, what's the vision without the park for the rest of the social district? What was kind of discussed?
Uh, well, I think that uh will vary from uh individual to individual that was part of the discussion. I I think the the restaurant owners uh viewed it obviously as an opportunity uh to stay competitive with other communities that that already have established the social districts. I believe they viewed it as an opportunity, perhaps if uh the business is full or or at capacity, that they could still provide some service to someone uh to wander around until they get beeped, to let into the restaurant for dinner service. I I I think the the restaurant owners had some operational things that they saw as a benefit to this. Um, yeah, so I, again, it it would vary from individual to individual, so.
And then quickly, I I know you said that it takes two um for it to to go. Do you have a sense of how many are interested?
Um, well, there's what, one, two, there's three on the DDA board, I believe, at least two, that I know will will probably jump right in. Uh, I would be surprised if uh we didn't get at least half of the the restaurants downtown, the liquor licenses. I know the hotels interested at the Hyatt Place with their liquor service, uh they were part of the committee. Uh, I know uh Motor City Gas is interested, they were part of the committee. I I know, you know, all of those types, so I'd be, I'd be surprised if we didn't get at least half of them.
Mr. Colo?
Here, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Twain, well, looking at the map, um, the revised map on page 31, um, or e- either map, it doesn't really matter. Um, are all, is the entire district also a common area? Uh, I can't, there's no black outline that would indicate it's a district, so as far as I could tell, our entire district will be the common area.
Yes, the 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 intent is only to make the common areas the street right-of-ways. Um, so it would be Main Street sidewalk, uh my understanding, and again, I we're new to everyone, but my understanding, if you close the street, um, simply to put tables and chairs out there, uh that would become part of the common area. Now, one of the nuances in the statute is if there's a special event, it's approved, that also is approved for a liquor license, then the social district can't operate what's going on. Uh, so I believe the social district is going to have to shut down during arts, beats, and eats, this would be my understanding, but uh, again, I would defer to the legal counsel to make sure how all that operates in the police department, because they'll be running it, but uh, the only, the only gathering areas, as I termed it, would be the park when it's uh completed, uh some of the right-of-ways that are already closed, and then the west parking lot uh uh adjacent to the farmer's market.
So the the that actually gets into the second half of my question. Um, when I think of a social district, I'm thinking of beer gardens, I'm thinking of places I can go and congregate. Um, I'm not just thinking, while it might be nice on an occasion to walk down the road, maybe from, you know, my brunch, my my brunch to, you know, go shop or whatever. Um, I I think a more um, a better use of this will be to establish areas in districts in which we are actually allowing people to go get a drink and congregate. Um, things that come off the top of my head, you know, Center Street by Gus Lane Alley, that that's a perfect area that we get people establish tables, let people go and congregate and enjoy an area um outside and close enough to businesses to grab a drink and come back. We have the alley uh behind uh Mr. B's and, or I'm sorry, Alchemy now, the Henry Ford Building. Um, there there are a lot of common areas that while I'm fine with the entire overlay, I I'm really, I think we need to focus on finding some of these common areas too um and shutting them down, and then a a larger, just the one more thing out there. Uh, not that long ago, we shut down Main Street a couple nights uh during the summertime, it was a ton of fun, I brought my kid down there, we had a lot of fun. Um, a cocktail might be that a little bit more fun, um hauling around a bunch of kids. Um, and I know the restaurants, when we did close down the Main Street, were a little upset that they didn't have sales, and this kind of solves it, so this is a win for residents and a win for restaurants, um if we can kind of make that happen, so I just threw a lot at you, just punch whatever you want.
Uh, well, I would say that the alley uh behind Alchemy between 11 Mile and Third Street is included. If you look at the map, it's the narrow uh narrow strip that's uh there. So we, by including the right-of-way in there, if the commission chooses to close the street, I believe you can put your tables and chairs out there, I don't believe we need to identify those tonight.
Yeah, so I I I guess that's the next step, like, you know, I I guess I I'd be okay approving this tonight, but I think the next step I would like is you know, the event, the the next, the next step of this, because I I I think step one is defining this, but I think step two is really wh- what are we going to do with it? What what's going to make us stand out? And these are really, th- these will provide utility to both the restaurants and citizens, if we can find a way to use these spaces.
Commissioner Dubak?
Just uh wondering if we can get the chief's take on this, if if they've looked at the experience of other cities with regard to public safety, any nuisance concerns?
I, uh, yep, I I had the opportunity to talk to the chief of Northville and Farmington. They both have social districts, and uh they said they had absolutely no problems with them. They worked very well, and uh they they didn't see any issue at all.
Great, and no concerns on your end?
No, sir. As long as it, the 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 key is it doesn't go late into the night, that would be a concern, but we've we've addressed that, so.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I'll I'll go back to the chief here. It strikes me that there are a few places where people will inevitably gather. Um, and and I I'm thinking about Fifth Street between Washington and um Center. I'm thinking about Eagle Plaza, I'm thinking about the farmer's market parking lot. Um, what do we do to not look like Miami Beach? Um, that is, how do we control crowds to avoid um uh, you know, disease transmission and um um bad things?
Well, I, one of the challenges we have is there there aren't, until the park's done, there's really not a lot of natural gathering spaces that are of any decent size. So the parking lots themselves are excluded from the district right now. So if we wanted to um cut out a portion of the parking lot to throw some picnic tables up, you could do that, but as of right now, there's not a lot of places, I think big crowds could really gather, but um there's not much you can do about people on the sidewalk coming together um if that's what they choose to do.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Mr. Dubak?
Guys, I think on that uh train of thought, uh have we considered uh signage, you know, encouraging distancing? The whole purpose for this is to let people be outside, where they can distance and be in open air. So uh can we promote that, you know, throughout the district with with signage, encouraging people to distance and and mask when they're walking nearby people?
Yeah, put it on the mug, put it on the cup.
Uh, yeah, certainly, there, we're we're going to have to generate, once, once we knew the boundaries of the district that the commission was supportive of, we're going to have to generate a certain number of signs that we're going to have to have done, whether they're mounted on uh existing sign poles, or whether we come up with a sidewalk decal that puts them on the street. Uh, I think we'll get into that with the DPS and what what's the best way to display it and attract people's attention to it. Uh, in the commission letter, you may see that there was also a series of items where we're going to have to identify the rules uh so that people have, you know, we can tell them what the rules are, and I think as part of that, we can make a statement about social distancing and uh congregations and things like that.
I may, I may even make the recommendation that whatever you can fit on that uh plastic cup, a few of the key rules that you really want people to, you know, like, sort of the the highest failure modes of people. Um, you know, whatever those are that you want to avoid, um, put it right on them, put it right on the cup, you know what I mean, on the backside of the cup, I mean, it's it's a cup. You know, it's disposable, that they can read the rules right there while they're drinking their beverage. Not 50 rules, but major ones. Uh, Christian Colo?
Uh, you know, uh, Mr. Mayor, you just mentioned cups, and we kind of started to discuss about the cups earlier, and I kind of got away from it. Um, I would hope that we can go with a recyclable or um compulsible cup, but also, we're going to need more spaces for those cups. For, you know, we have a handful of recycling bins throughout downtown. Uh, we might have to double that amount or find an adequate amount to make sure we don't have one, people just throwing them away, because it's, there's more trash bins than recycle bins. Uh, so we'll have to increase at least a trash, you know, potentially a recycle bin next to every trash bin.
Yep. Put on there, recycle me, and then put a few bins strategically placed all the trash bins. You're not going to get 100%, but if you get 80, it's far better. Anybody else? Alright, so we have some proposals in front of us. Uh, Commissioner Colo?
Uh, if if you want, I can make a motion here, so we can start things going.
Let's do it.
Okay, I propose um the social district as presented in the amended draft.
Um, go ahead.
Look, two more things, with the provision of um the use of recyclable or compulsible cups and direction to staff to come up with some events that would uh find places for people to congregate.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak. Alright, discussion on the motion. Uh, go Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Dubak.
Um, I was, I'd like to propose an amendment to s- to put dates around it. Um, I think that was discussed by Mr. Twain as a possibility to have a sunset clause on this. I mean, I think he said some random dates, but they sounded okay to me, so I don't know, June 1st to November 1st, but I'm Mr. Twain, please.
Yeah, uh, I I don't know that we want to have a start date on it, but I would, if you want to have an initial period, uh, if you wanted to establish a a date when you wanted to see it again, have a report from staff of the Police Department, DPS, on how things are working, so that you would have a, you'd have to take an action to continue it. Um, whether you wanted to do that in October 31st or December 31st, I'll leave to
I'll just start saying months, and you guys just nod when I get to the right month, August, September, October, November, December, nobody's nodding, December, November.
I think Sep- the end of September might be fine, just because you've kind of had the the summer and and, you know, to look at it, work out the quirks, and then, you know, things maybe slow down a little bit in September to allow staff to you know, put a report together that has actual meaning.
Sounds good. September it is. That's my motion. Thanks, thanks for the help.
I meant, we have an amendment to the motion for a September 30th date, we have a second by Commissioner Dubak, any discussion on the amendment? Yeah, I'll call for the vote on the amendment, Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we're back to the original motion now, modified with the date. Um, to check in, uh, Commissioner Dubak?
Anyway, I just wanted to clarify uh with Commissioner Colo, unfortunately, he had the motion, direction to staff to create events to create gathering space, did he mean amenities or events? I thought we were talking about your tables and chairs or identifying spaces where folks can sit.
Yeah, I I identifying actions we can take in some way to do that.
Okay, so not events necessarily.
And, you know, maybe like shutting down Main Street for every, you know, for a Friday night type of thing, that type of event, but yes, amenities and events type of
versus just walking around on the sidewalks, is the way I interpreted it, right?
You say it so much better than I do, Mr. Mayor.
That's why I get paid twice as much as you, Commissioner Colo. Uh, Commissioner Douglas?
You know, I'm not wild about this. Um, but I, we've done a good job, I think, up until now of helping our downtown food service establishment as much as we can. Um, and I do want to continue to do that, but I just, I I just fear there is, there are opportunities for mischief. Um, and I'm I'm going to count on the chief to keep an eye on things. Um, so I will support the motion, but reluctantly.
If there's something that goes bad, we can kill it immediately. Commissioner Prush?
Um, I'm not, I mean, I'm not going to vote no, but I'm not excited about this either, because I just, I just don't see it adding that much more of an amendment to what we've already got downtown, because we don't have those large public spaces like other communities have. Um, and we can create some, um, but they're not going to have the same kind of ambiance and draw that that they that happens in other communities, they have different kinds of spaces downtown. Um, I'm also really concerned about the use of this type of thing in Centennial Park. Now granted, we're going to have an opportunity to reevaluate it at the end of September and see whether or not we want to go forward with it at any point in the future. Um, but I I guess I am not comfortable with the prospect of having congregations of of adults, a lot of adults with cups of alcohol in their hands. congregations of, of adults, a lot of adults with cups of alcohol in their hands congregating in the park because there aren't a whole lot of other large spaces where they could congregate. So that's, that's my reservation. So we'll see what happens and obviously I, I would assume that if this extends into the period after the park is finished, which is probably going to be the end of October, we can put some provisions in there where if things start to get a little dicey, we can shut it down in certain areas. But that's, that's my one concern about this.
I share that concern as well, Commissioner Perush. And I think when it comes time to opening up the park, I think we should re, see how it's gone in the summer and see how that might parlay into a park use and kind of say maybe no in the park. Put some boundaries up if possible, if we need to do that.
I don't think by ordinance we allow alcohol in any of the other parks in the communities. That would be, this would be an exception. And I guess I'm not willing at this point to make an exception to that rule.
I'm with you. Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I've got some nerves about this as well because it's new. I'm reassured to hear from the chief that the other communities that have done this have not found it to be problematic. So I'm hoping that will be the case here as well. But I, I was, I was talking to my husband about this earlier and 100 years ago, when I worked for Daimler and we had a lot of German friends who lived around here. One thing that they thought was the most peculiar about American life is that we couldn't walk around with beer. Like we couldn't have a beer or wine in a park. And they're like, it's so strangely puritanical that you have this binge culture in the bars and then you can't like hang out with your friends at the park and have a beer. So I can see, I can see it both ways, that we have this, we have this particular view of how we consume our alcohol, but perhaps there's a different view that is maybe, maybe healthier where, you know, it's, you don't, I don't think you go to Centennial Commons to binge drink. I don't think that's what you do. I think you're there with, with a glass of wine or a beer from the, from a local establishment and you're just hanging out and passing through and then you go home. That, that's to me what happens, especially as, as this ends at 10 o'clock. So I, I have hope that this could be interesting, a useful draw for downtown Royal Oak and could be helpful for our businesses. And I am, I'm particularly interested in this gathering place idea. I would love to have some kind of a beer garden in between the parking structure and Alchemy. I feel like that's what we had sort of envisioned. There were some, there had been some pictures, some drawings at one point of like lights kind of across that with the tables underneath. And I think this is an opportunity to make that a really a fun place to be. So I, I'm hopeful for this, but I think we're all going to have some nerves until we see how it works out. So we'll see.
Commissioner Polo?
I, I guess I agree with everything Commissioner Macy just said. I just want to add too, Eagle Park is included in this already. So there is an overlay for a park. And I guess we'd have to defer to, and, and I don't want to put you on the spot, so I'm not looking for an answer right now, maybe next meeting, but maybe that ordinance does need an exception drawn into it. I think Eagle Park's a great way, you know, a great little test. I know during the summer concert series, my son loves to run up and down those little molehills like it's his job. And I like, I get to sit there and watch him do it the entire time. It'd be nice to sit there and socialize with other parents and maybe enjoy a drink while we do it. So I, I think that's a, a potential benefit that we can see.
Yeah, I, I have no problem abandoning things, abandoning elements, adding elements. I mean, it's going to be a learning process, learning from other communities. If we have issues that, that pop up that are a problem, we'll make changes. You know what I mean? Or we'll abandon the whole thing altogether if it's, if it's not good, or we'll put it on steroids if it's the best thing ever. So I think we have flexibility and we have time to figure this out. And we got the support of the chief and, and, you know, he's got a plan for it for public safety and we'll take it day by day, see what happens. You know, at the end of the day, nothing, you know, I don't see this out of the gate becoming an insurmountable problem if there's an issue. It's ending at early enough in the night. But we'll, we'll take it step by step, day by day. Anybody else? All right, I'll call for the, the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Dubak.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Polo?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, crew, this brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is request to schedule city commission special meetings, budget sessions, and public hearing. Ms. Rudd, how are you doing today?
Good. Thank you.
Thanks for bearing with us.
Good evening. Yes, I'd like to ask that you set the budget work sessions for mid to late May and as well as the public hearing for your first meeting in June, which has been the traditional date. It is anticipated that the proposed budget will be delivered to you on May 10th, which is your first meeting in May. And the proposed work session dates that I have on the letter are for Monday, May 17th, Wednesday, May 19th, and then the last Wednesday, May 26th. And each of those would begin at 6:00 PM.
Questions for Ms. Rudd about the dates. Does work for everyone? Wow. I'm guessing Commissioner Hunt is checking a couple of things in her calendar at the moment, so we'll give a second. Okay, we're good. Okay, and someone, or Commissioner Dubak's taking a picture of us all. All right. Don't see any objections, so I'm sure if someone makes a motion, it passed pretty readily. Christian Polo?
Assuming it is okay with Commissioner Dubak and his schedule here, I'd like to move the, the proposed dates.
Motion by Commissioner Cole. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion. All right, no discussion. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Polo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, that could have been the easiest one in history, Ms. Rudd. I'm not for certain, but I'm pretty sure it was. So congratulations, team. You're off to a good start. Let's agree like that when I make all my amendments to the budget, okay? Same, same type of unanimous agreement. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rudd. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Notwithstanding anything else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Polo?
Mr. Mayor, much like a good nap, this is never long enough. So unfortunately, I do make the motion.
Okay, we motion by Commissioner Polo. We have a second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Polo?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are adjourned. Thank you all, everyone for, for participating tonight. Thank you for people tuning in. Thank you, Chief O'Donoghue, for keeping us really safe during these challenging times on the cybernets. Ms. Hallis, Carol, Richard, thank you for all your help tonight, Mr. Brake. And thank you for all your preparations and the rest of staff, Holly, everybody else. Thank you, and we'll see you again. Stay safe and get your vaccinations. Talk to you soon. Bye.
Bye.